I now call order the special session meeting of the Florida Commissioner of the City of Tarpon Springs on Wednesday, June 5th, 2013 at 6:30 roll call.
Yeah, Archie?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Slattery here, Mr. Larson?
Here.
Mr. Serpenny?
Here.
Mr. Vanser?
Here.
We will now go to public comments on any items that will not be discussed this evening. Saying none, we will go to item number one approved entering into an agreement for employee wellness clinic with the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust. I'd like to bring Mr. Clay Austin up in the team to go with you again.
Thank y'all for having me back this evening. I wanted to start off by just saying, my name is Clay Austin. I work for the Florida League of Cities, which is y'all's association. I get paid a flat salary annually. I make no additional monies off of any services that the League of Cities provides to any of its members. My job is to save our cities, our member cities, healthcare dollars. That's it, 100%, that's my job. We believe so much in this clinic project that the savings that will be there for our cities and our member cities, that we are fronting to almost a quarter of a million dollars just to get it running. And I will say that I do look forward to continuing to assess the city of Tarpon Springs and saving healthcare dollars in the future as well. I brought along, I brought along Don Wenders who represents CareACT, as well as the doctor that would be providing the services within the Wellness Center itself. And they'll be able to speak to that as well. And then Wendy White who is also a CareACT employee and she's the, one of the executive marketing people for this territory as well. So she has to meet these clients in the area.
Basically, we have everybody here for any further questions of the contract, the agreements, or Wellness Center. And they're here to answer any further your questions and get any further explanations you need to make a decision on this guy. I'm not sure where the rest of you want to start. I just say that most of you know that I've had a chance to meet with the hospital because of some of their concerns. And we looked at talking in terms of trying to address it. One of the main concerns was they like to have a chance to talk to the staffs and then CareACT in terms of what was being proposed and they could perhaps do it better. And we've had that type of discussion. From that, it was one of some of the secondary services that will be provided. And the hospital having an opportunity to be a part of it. And I would say publicly is that, you know, that's something that, as long as it's cost effective, as long as it's comparable, I would hope that, you know, we can support in terms of moving forward and talk to the staffs and about whether that's possible, you know, in terms of if they have services right here in Tarpon that's cost effective and comparable to any other places, that would be first preference in terms of having those services.
That, that, actually, that's actually why I brought our CareACT reps here. That contracting is between CareACT and any of the provider piece of it. So I am going to bring up Don Wenders who will probably be the one answering most of these, most of the questions about the contracting with CareACT itself and how that would mislead.
Good evening.
Thanks.
I do have Wendy White, she is the Director of our Eastern Operations here with us, as well as Dr. Rowland, who is currently working in our Clearwater facility and also in the Tampa facility. He is our lead physician, we've designated for the Wellness Center for Tarpon Springs and Osmar. So if there's any issues, I'd like him a little bit later to discuss the differences. He was in private practice in Dunedin for years. To share the differences between private practice and our model, or maybe shed some light on that. We did have, we had a conversation last night with the hospital representatives. And we are, we look forward to partnering with them. We even committed to, we'll go to them first. But our job, reason our model has worked, is we're independent of any group. We don't, there's no financial gain for our doctors to refer anybody out to order labs, to not order labs. They simply take care of our clients, of our patients. So with that said, though, we're going to be needing plenty of services. We're going to need physical therapy, we're going to establish imaging, we'll establish sleep disorder. There's plenty of opportunities that we'll be going outside to negotiate with these entities. Our first choice because of Florida Hospital's reputation and their footprint, our first choice would be to work with them. And as was mentioned earlier, we, at this point, we can't commit anything else until we see the pricing structure, etc. But that would be our desire. And we made that clear last night during our conversation.
And again, just to emphasize, that's not, the people and employees of the city have an option, whoever they choose to go to, whether it be the Florida Hospital Network, whether it be the Bay Care Network, or whether it's another network out there, the employees, which is very important about the independence of this clinic. You know, all healthcare facilities and stuff have their group of people who will go to them and there's another group that will not go to them. The important thing for our employees is to have the independence to be able to go to one or another. That's why a lot of the suggestions the hospital has brought to me and stuff is not acceptable because that would change that. And I think that's very important to know, even if you have these things, those people have the opportunity to go local, go Florida Hospital, go more in France, go wherever they want to go because it's even optional to go to the clinic. They don't even have to go to the clinic, they can go there. So just understand that this is not something we're going to be directing people to, but it's going to be options available.
We need to go a step further. We, we don't want anyone to be required to come to the Wellness Center. As soon as that happens, that puts a barrier up. It's free choice, it's word of mouth. We'll stand our merits and we take care of our patients and they'll want to come, but we don't want anyone forced to come. It's simply another option. We're open 12 hours a week, there's plenty of hours in the week, if I do my math, another 156 hours that people will need perhaps to access other facilities, other options. We, the other point too, we focus on, we see anyone that wants to come to the Wellness Center for things such as sports physicals, for strep tests, strep throat cultures, for anything that you can have done in a primary care facility, that's what we're there for. However, we focus on the, on talking to Clay, about 30% and please correct me if I'm wrong, about 30% of the people engaged the plan last year. We, if someone has a relationship with the physician, you'll see in our orientation meeting, we encourage that to stay in place. We're really focusing on the 70% that doesn't have a doctor. That hadn't seen a doctor in maybe years, that we engage them. And one of our, the mainstay of our program is the personal health assessment. This is a 12-hour fasting blood draw, got a finger prick. And this is mailed HIPAA compliant to each participant that does participate. We hope we get 100% of the covered adults, we want, that's our goal. But everybody that does participate, they'll get this mail to them and it's a, it's a red, yellow, and green system. And when you see red, that means it's not good. And so what we're going to do initially, the first thing we will do is once these reports are generated and sent to the employees, Dr. Rowland will have an opportunity through the report to see the patients that have red in their results. To have some issues that they might probably don't even know it exists, high blood pressure, had it, maybe don't even know it, prediabetic cholesterol levels that are high. The first thing will happen, he or one of our medical directors will call, call those, personally call those individuals and invite them into the Wellness Center. And the conversation will go something like this, "Hey, Don, did you get your personal health assessment?" And whether I say yes, I read every word, or whether I say I saw it but I didn't open it up, the next statement is, "There's some issues we need to address. Can you come to the Wellness Center at 1:30 on Tuesday? You'll be the only one scheduled at that time. There's no co-pay involved. You ain't got a clock out." That's what our other clients, I know y'all just sat through this, but our other clients, you ain't got a clock out, you ain't got to wait, there'll be no one else in the waiting room, it's you and the doctor. Even hard-headed people such as myself, there's not many excuses left. My physician says, "I need to see you," and it won't cost a dime. You're in and out within, our first initial visit is 30 minutes. And I won't speak for everybody, I'll speak for myself. It takes many, many visits to equal 30 minutes with your physician normally. Because they have five or six people booked, which my physician did at a 1:30 appointment, and you wait to see the physician. You move back to the room, waiting room, or exam room, and you wait some more. With ours, you're the only one booked. 30 minutes with your physician for him to, him or her to ask questions about you, to go over your individual situation, to get you on a program to better your health. Again, these are mostly people that hadn't seen a doctor, that didn't have a doctor. So it will have perhaps an impact on the hospital. I mean, honestly, our goal is to have an impact on the hospital. We want to have fewer people going to the hospital. That's our purpose, is to identify people that have high-risk illness, potential illnesses, and get them on a treatment plan so they don't have that catastrophic event. That's better for the patient, it's better for the family, it's better for the city if they don't lose an employee, and it's better for our claims. But there's other areas where we do need the hospital. And we will be asking to partner with them if possible in those ancillary products and services.
I don't know, you know, we kind of open the ceremony, of the way that we moved tonight and get this done, we have a number of people here, assume they want to speak. I don't mind going to them, you have questions, we can go and ask all individual questions. I'd just say that I've had a lot of conversations with a lot of the people in the audience. And I told them, the same thing I said to them privately, I say publicly. Because I don't have any shared agenda. And that's one, is that we're looking to try to put together a health plan for the employees, first and foremost. Nothing we want to do that's going to hurt the hospital. If there's opportunities to help, that's what we want to do. But we're trying to put together a health plan for employees, to try to assist them in trying to be helped. And one of the things that came out is that we're talking about a lot of people that don't even utilize any help, you know. They don't go to anybody now. And we're trying to put, set up something so that they will have an opportunity to have coverage. So with that, I don't know if you're having questions there, you want to go to public comments, whatever your pleasure is, to try to get enough information so we can make a decision and move on.
Yes, sir. Much love.
Thank you, thank you for coming here tonight. When you, when you, when you talk about maybe providing prefer partnership with Florida Hospital here, here, here in Tarpon, would that be in writing anywhere, with any contracts or agreements, more than just verbal? Not that we don't trust a verbal agreement, but just when you mention that, and know that's in good faith and thank you, can that, can that, can that be in, be in, be in, be in writing?
Well, we can't put it in writing, we'll go to them first. What we're not able to at this point is what comes out of that meeting. But if there's an agreement, if their price structure, as was mentioned earlier, if their price structure is such that it can help save money, there'll be, there'll be situations to where going through United Healthcare is less expensive than going, than us offering a service. And so they will continue to, the doctor will continue to refer out through United Healthcare to specialists or whatever it might be. If there's situations where we can save money by doing it with an agreement between us and the hospital as an example, it will be a written agreement and a price structure as such to provide certain services.
And so, and you're confident 12 hours, which doesn't sound like a lot would be enough to cover, you know, like in Osmar.
Yes, and that's based on our, we have about 60 clinics, that's where we usually start. We start every 300 employees is eight hours a week of office visits. That's where, of office hours, I should say. That's where our model starts. Then we, we look at utilization reports on a monthly basis. And if it gets to where it's taking too long to get an appointment, then we'll increase the hours. But we'd rather start, you don't want a doctor at $125 an hour sitting there waiting on a patient.
I understand.
So we always increase hours as needed, but that model has served us well over the last 15 years. So that's where we get that from.
I have a question for Mr. Austin over there. You then, you talked about the potential savings that we have in the realm of $300,000, I believe, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Has there ever been a time with one of your experiences with a city giving a clinic where they've not realized those savings?
Not one.
Not one, they've all met it, met it, or even surpassed it?
Not one in the state of Florida, because that's where I, obviously, that's where I work and I have access to the city, being with the league. And when we, when we went through and did our due diligence on setting this up, not one. I actually kind of wish I'd have found one that didn't make it, so I would have a, I know kind of where our pitfall could be when we were looking at it, but I didn't find one.
If it's in Clearwater, they're near the, near Clearwater share, where is it located at? But it's in Clearwater, correct?
It is, it's in Clearwater.
It's in Clearwater. And I assume that is that 40 hours a week because of their demand or their style?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I would clarify that too. My fact finding was not from CareACT, my fact finding was through the Florida League of Cities.
Thank you.
Thank you. When it comes to hiring staff, say, the doctor that would be on staff, is it a doctor or a nurse practitioner?
We use board certified physicians as our model. However, a client can request a nurse practitioner, we'll honor that, but our model calls for a board certified physician. And the reason, it probably shouldn't be this way, we get better compliance with a board certified physician. So even though it might cost a little bit more per hour, the compliance rate has shown to be higher. I will say this, though, we have the best nurse practitioner ever over in Tampa that I would go see 100% of the time. So it, that's a general statement, not a specific statement, but overall, that's been our experience.
So, so, well, what I'm getting at is, would we ever, would you consider hiring one of our physicians that are on staff at our hospital here as the doctor?
I'll answer it from our model, is our physicians become our employees because it is so different. We have to retrain a physician when they come into our system because it's so different than what's out there now. So they become our employee, they come under our malpractice, we can monitor that and we can implement our, our system. If you're asking if we could hire a physician that became our employee, we could do that, I don't think that would resolve the issue of having that physician become our employee. It then gets us right back to square one. So if, the question is, would we put a Florida Hospital physician in the Wellness Center? We have never done that, it gets us away from our model. What we're trying to do, and you are the client, Clay, the League of Cities is the client, so they can dictate certain things, but we want to replicate the model that's in Tampa and Clearwater and Dunedin, it's worked tremendously. And we're trying to keep that model in place because it's proven to be so successful.
And I have to say, I did speak to some employees at the city of Dunedin and they said it's the best thing that the city's ever done for them. I do want to lay that out, not knowing if this is the best thing for our community or not yet, but they did say that, you know, they're in and out and they can be seen. Of course, their hours are a lot better than, we're only offering 12 hours. I think they're open a lot.
Can I speak to that just a second as well? If you were to, again, let me just use my experience. If I were to call my physician, if I get an appointment, it would probably be two, maybe two or three weeks out, I'll just, so, again, 12 hours for this number of employees, you could probably get an appointment quicker under our system than you could if you went outside. And if that becomes an issue, that's when we increase the hours. Because we're only dealing with a finite number of employees, independents, that model has worked and we adjust accordingly. I'll say one other thing, after every encounter with a provider, we have an iPod and we do a survey. About eight to 10 questions, was it clean, was it staff friendly? But the last question is, were you 100% satisfied with your visit? We're running over 96% with Dunedin, Tampa, and Clearwater for an office visit. It would be hard to duplicate that in the system outside of ours. I will tell you this, if we gave everybody in this room a $100 bill, it'd be hard to get 96% of the people saying, "I'm 100% satisfied." It'd be extra taxes, or why didn't you give it to me last week when I really needed it, or whatever. It's hard to get 96% of people, including, and you know the ones that weren't happy, they absolutely dropped the survey. We just haven't gotten any. There's not a whole lot to complain about. And you show up, no costs, and get in and out, and it turns out to be a pretty good experience.
What about, now, in the contract, I believe it says that you'd be open for 12 hours. So if you, if there was a need to extend hours, who would, would we be paying that cost, as the city?
The trust would, the trust would end up paying that cost to start with and that would go into your operating cost of the clinic itself.
It would, okay, thank you. And is there a need for, is there imaging available there or blood work done at that facility? Or would, because if not, what would suggest is if we could put something in the contract that it is done at our local hospital?
Yes, we had that discussion as well last night. We have a national contract with LabCorp, so we do the, we draw the specimen on site. Every day they come by our contract, they come by, pick it up, and then send us the results within 24 to 48 hours. That, we're always open to better pricing. That pricing is hard to beat, and we haven't beat it yet. The hospital is welcome to take a look at it, they discussed that last night and said it'd probably be hard to beat LabCorp's national contract just because it has more, uh, buying power, I suppose.
Right, what about imaging services?
Imaging services we need.
Okay.
Physical therapists we need.
Can I answer about the imaging?
Please, please do.
One thing I'd like for you to know is that Clearwater did a unique situation when they started their Employee Health Center in 2010 and they went out to the local community and they opened sort of a bid process with imaging providers with certain conditions that needed to be met. We had certain price points that we needed in order to satisfy a certain level of funding on the health plan. But in addition to that, there were conditions like turnaround time, things that were, that became very familiar to us in that process, things that I saw in Florida hospitals, turnaround, guaranteed turnaround and that sort of thing, and their response. So there are, there's a certain level of negotiation that can take place that, that in essence guarantees services. And that could at some point lead to a written agreement, but it's not in the broad spectrum that's being requested of us. So this, that's probably the first time that you've heard that. But if Florida Hospital had a guaranteed, you know, 12-hour turnaround time or something that we negotiated with them in terms of getting patients in the same day for imaging or results back within 24 hours and that sort of thing, we're absolutely going to use the providers that work the best with us to get the turnaround and get the information back to the provider so they can communicate with the patient, so. We absolutely, we work with hospital systems, we work with, with private groups. Very large medical groups in Pinellas in particular opted not to bid for that opportunity and later came back wanting that opportunity. And Clearwater had already selected two providers, they didn't feel that they needed a third. And later down the line, we began to integrate many, many services through their wellness program. And we're in the process of implementing many services through Clearwater's wellness program to bring services into the Wellness Center setting and to bring those services directly to the employees, whether it's education or specialty services. So lots of opportunities down the line.
Thank you. What about prescriptions? You administer prescription right there, you know, if they need, if somebody needs high blood pressure medicine or something.
We do have a standard formulary of basic generic medications. We review, typically, we review the utilization on the health plan to determine what the top medications are. We go through a process at least once a year of looking at your top tier of medications and seeing if there are generic equivalents or if there's a cost-effective offering within our, excuse me, our formulary or what we could add to your formulary. It becomes a customized approach at that point. So it's all a matter of reviewing.
Do you ever offer prescriptions at no cost?
All of the prescriptions that the employee receives in the Wellness Center are dispensed at no cost.
That's what I heard about Dunedin, okay.
Florida law actually dictates that we have to offer the patient a paper prescription at the time that we provide them the medication. So before we hand them a bottle, a prepackaged sealed bottle of medication with instructions, we also attempt to hand them a paper. We've never had a patient say, "I'd rather fill this down the road." But Florida law states that we have to do that. So we offer the patient a prescription, we give them the option to take that elsewhere. And of course, they say, "But you have it free, so I'm taking that one."
Right. So, and it runs the same way, every time you see a patient, that has to be put in the system somewhere that they've been seen by a doctor and noted. Is it the same system that Florida Hospital uses that we have like,
Electronic records.
Yeah, electronic records and all that, right?
We do have electronic medical records. The vendor that we use is E-Clinical Works, I'm not certain what Florida Hospital uses. But we use E-Clinical Works and the prescriptions are documented through e-dispense methods. So if Dr. Rowland were to prescribe a patient three different medications and two of them were on the formulary and one was not, the patient would leave with the two medications that we offer and the third would be sent to the pharmacy of their choice.
Okay. Those are my questions for now, thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to hear a little bit more about the Clearwater Dunedin Clinic in terms of their history. Could you go over again, when, when did that clinic start? And also, when did Zadeen become a part of that?
Well, it started July of 2010, Clearwater did. Dunedin joined in about a year ago last.
In July of 2012.
July 2012?
Yes.
And are you able to speak to how successful that's been in terms of dollars and cents? I know Vice Mayor Slattery mentioned that some Dunedin employees say it's the best thing that's happened. Are you able to speak to some of the dollars and cents involved?
We'd love to. We, there were, this is on their website as a matter of fact, too. I watched the presentation to the City Council that Mr. Joe Riss said it did and took notes from that. And 18 months into it, they had, it was about four million in savings with 2 million in cost. They're about, including the startup cost, and this is round numbers, I've lost memory. But I did see the article in the paper here locally last week where he was interviewing, he says their net savings is about a million dollars a year. They pay us about a million dollars a year. That, that, they have about four times the employees, so it's about four times the cost here. And, but it's a two to one ROI. And on top of that, honestly, if it was a break even for the success that we've had and for the documented lives that have been perhaps saved, you can't say that for sure, but certainly have been impacted by having identified certain conditions, if it was a break even, it'd still be a great deal, just as a benefit as has been mentioned with employees.
Do you have, and maybe it's, maybe it's too early at this point, do you have any information on success for Dunedin?
I don't.
Well, where Dunedin saw their specific cost savings was they had a, an HMO program that was essentially a gatekeeper program. So all patients had to go through a primary care physician to achieve referrals and that sort of thing. And about, well, 90 days, October 1st, they switched over to the traditional PPO plan. And at that point, their number of primary care visits on the plan, of course, decreased significantly because the patients were utilizing the Employee Health Center for those services. However, once again, many of the patients chose to stay with their primary care physician. They just no longer had the gatekeeper program, which was unique to their health plan. But those who did engage with the Health Center had their personal health assessment completed. They were required on their plan to have at least one visit with the Employee Health Center to qualify for their health savings, their health reimbursement account. And their utilization has been extremely high. One thing that happened with them, though, is that the day Clearwater opened, Dunedin said, said, "We want in." And Clearwater held them back long enough to sort of allow themselves to- to become grownups and function appropriately and feel like they were- they were, um, happy in their own skin. So, once we hit the two-year mark and they were comfortable with the agreement and they stepped out, those were the easiest employee meetings I have ever done, because those employees had been hearing about the Employee Health Center for two years, and they were so fired up, they just- they were ready to go.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I'll keep my questions relatively brief. I do have a few comments for the end, and I think you did say this, but who hires the physician?
We make the final decision because of the liability firewall that's in place. We don't want to put a client in the position of hiring a- a physician. If things go sideways, as told us, we assume all liability for operations of the clinic. However, you have input with that. At it- if any- at any time there's issues with the physician, it's our responsibility to resolve that, the ultimate case being that we remove that physician and re- replace with another.
And you said the physician is board certified?
Board certified. I can ver- I can verify it.
Um, and if- if the physician or doctor's unavailable, who fills in?
We're responsible for that. As a matter of fact, Dr. Rowland now is, uh, working twenty hours a week in the Clearwater Dun- Clearwater Dunedin, and he's filling in for Tampa. We also have another physician in Tampa whose wife is- is a board certified physician. We use her to fill in for returning leave at, um, we head over to Clearwater. We won't have that issue here, but anytime like that, it's our responsibility, and we- and we're responsible making sure that the doctor, the physician that comes in is also qualified to do such.
That was my next question.
All of us have to meet our same, uh, criteria for pre-certification and, um, that just as if we were credentialing the physician to work for us directly.
So if the physician on staff is unavailable to come in, someone of similar background, board certified, et cetera, is replaced?
Yes, that's true. For vacations or just illnesses or anything that comes up, yes.
And the office is open twelve hours a week. How's it utilize the balance of the week?
We are, right now, hoping to- two- two parts of that answer to that question, we're- we're looking in the future to add more clients into that, uh, facility, and thus it'll increase the hours. For example, if we add another city with a hundred and fifteen employees, add- add another four hours a week minimum to that. Our goal is to get it where it's open as many hours as possible. There is- otherwise, it will not be utilized, except there's a room in the back of about, I'm guessing five hundred square feet, I hadn't- hadn't, uh, marked it off yet, that the city, that we didn't need for this wellness center, but the location was perfect. So, uh, Wendy's office will be there in the back part of that. She'll have the Director of Operations for the Eastern Division in the same office as your Wellness Center, but we will be paying for that, we'll not be charged back to the city. That's why the rent is roughly thirty-five hundred dollars. We're estimating it's going to be about three- three thousand between Osmar and, uh, and Tarpon Springs by the time we take our part out. We just hadn't gotten the lease signed yet.
So assuming six months down the road, you bring on another client, and you need another twenty hours, the city's rate is adjusted accordingly? Our- our overhead that we're paying for the rent and utilities-
It would decrease. Right now, it's a- it's a seventy-thirty split because of the total population. We would just take the total population of the new group and give it up based on the percentage of employees that you're- you represent, and it would decrease the overhead. That's our goal.
For example, with Clearwater and Dunedin, the original agreement was based on the population split, that Dunedin was going to use seventeen percent of the resources, and the way they structured their agreement, they just said we want to look at it annually. They didn't want that roller coaster. But, um, with a growing group near-site location, we have to have something built in so that we're evaluating that immediately, and that you see that restructure immediately. At the time they did that, um, Clearwater really had no intention of adding another group. They were- they were comfortable adding Dunedin, but they weren't really interested in adding more.
Mr. Trask, six months down the road, there's another client that's brought on, and we need to adjust the contract. Is that something that you see as an issue, or how do we go about doing that as far as an approval with this board?
It would be just like you would approve the original agreement. It would be an amendment to the agreement. We'd bring it back to you for your consideration, and that amendment would, of course, have to go to the City of Osmar as well as Tarpon Springs, um, and then there would probably be a consent by the third party that would be joining in.
One party says, "No, we don't want to do that." What happens?
Well, then it's not going to be done, because the agreement right now is between FMIT and Tarpon Springs and Osmar.
Right. So our contract will take place?
Yes, it's controllable. The other thing, what you- you've got to understand, though, is that there's some termination provisions in it, um, and, um, you know, there may be a decision to terminate the contract altogether if, in fact, it doesn't work out, and the consequences of the termination are re- are set forth in the contract, too.
Thank you. That's all my questions for now.
It's a, um, I'm going to use Commissioner Larson. One of the things I just mentioned is that, uh, uh, Attorney Trask, uh, is fairly familiar with this. We know that, uh, um, our attorney is the one that's- that's assigned us, uh, Attorney Yakobon is not here, but, uh, Attorney Trask is involved in the other, um, city, as far as Osmar. So, uh, he's well able to talk in terms of the contract and the rest of that, so. Commissioner Larson.
Thank you. Um, it- it was mentioned earlier that there could be a- a big process for imaging services. Uh, I wanted to hear a little bit more about that. I'm curious what other services could also be bid out in that type of a- a scenario, and I'm also curious when that bid process would take place. Uh, I mean, we're looking at possibly approving the agreements tonight. When- when would we move forward with approving some kind of a big process?
Well, essentially, the agreement would be between KRC and the local hospital or the providers. So it, like, as far as I'm concerned, it wouldn't require, um, council approval for that part of it, because we would be contracting those services directly. But, um, that process, we move immediately to determine what services are available in the area. We look for locations, um, that are convenient to the employee's home and work locations. That's a very, very important part of it, because part of our goal is, of course, the indirect cost of the employee being away from work. So that's how we would start the process, is to go out into the community.
You mentioned that the commission wouldn't likely be involved with that. I- I guess as a- as a partner in the agreement, I'm thinking that City of Tarpon Springs might have an opinion as to how the bid would be written and what the, uh, parameters would be. So how could Tarpon Springs be involved in that process?
I think that's just a matter of discussion. We need to determine what level of, um, involvement you would want, because with- with our situation, we're talking about specific services. So we're going to look at specific things that require quick turnaround, and the referral process, so a specialty referral, um, it can sometimes take a while to get into a physician, um, but under certain conditions, if they're willing to guarantee a shorter turnaround to allow your employees to get in more quickly, then they're going to be at the top of the list for referrals. So it's- it's very unofficial. Um, we- we have entered into written agreements before, and we've shared those written agreements, but in the past, we have not involved the municipal.
Right. Thank you.
Uh, if there's no other question, what I do is open it up to, uh, anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item, uh, come forward, state your name, address, and you'll be given up to four minutes.
Chris Roboski, one six zero two Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, three four six eight nine. Let me begin by saying that, first of all, I'm in favor of the city clinic, and it's the procedural process that I'd simply like more clarification on. Um, and there were last night at least three out of four commissioners that would like that as well, and they've said so. Uh, but then when they asked Mr. Yakobon, he simply said that the city was well within the right to do so, and when pressed on it, he basically said that a city can compare insurance rates just like a citizen. That didn't make any sense to me, because a city's process to do that would be RFP, RFQ. How else are you going to compare the- the differences? So then I went home to look it up, and I found in the state statutes, commodities, insurance, and contractual services. Two eighty-seven, legislative intent. The legislature recognizes that fair and open competition is a basic tenet of public procurement, that such competition reduces the appearance and opportunity for favoritism and inspires public confidence that contracts are awarded equitably and economically, and that documentation of the acts taken and effective monitoring mechanisms are important means of curbing any improprieties and establishing public confidence in the process by which commodities and contractual services are procured. Now, after reading that and the rest of the statute, to get clarification, I call the Division of State Group Insurance at the Department of Management Services. Now, the woman who runs that department was very clear that when spending other people's money, that she takes that very, uh, the weight of that, uh, very heavily, and she said that cities like ours generally adopt what the state has provided in law, and sometimes even more stringent, certainly not less stringent. So when I asked her, "How is it even possible, then, that this could be this way?", she did say that I should ask that the city attorney explain, so that everybody can understand, because she was not an expert in Tarpon Springs, uh, codes and ordinances. So she said, "Ask the city attorney to explain it so that everybody will know which of these things are exempt from bids, so that people won't be coming up here like this constantly asking you. Let's get it out in the open, which ones are exempt from bids and which ones are not", like the- the garbage company that we mentioned before, Mother's Organic, so they weren't allowed to give a presentation. Um, so clarification of the legal mechanism, and she did say that there is, uh, potential for piggybacking on an incumbent, uh, business with a city, uh, to bring in a new product, but she couldn't elaborate about how we do it, or even about how the state did it in- in law. So basically asking for clarification so that the other commissioners can get clarification on this, and they can make a vote in a more relaxed fashion, knowing that, you know, things were hashed out, and that you're actually voting on the best possible deal, and that, you know, hey, nobody else is going to bring in a better one, because we checked it out or whatever the process is. You know, and if it's because the city is strapped for asking to do more with less, and so they decided that it would be cheaper or easier to do it this way, then I totally understand that, then let's at least explain that, right? The reason that I'm saying this is not to scuttle this thing or to stop it, please understand this. It's to make it clear so that when you do get what you want, you don't get it taken away by somebody else. This whole mess of attorneys and people that could take it, you know, cause you more grace. So by taking our time and doing this thing all above board in the total sunshine, then everybody will be clear about the process, and I thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor, City Manager, Chief, and Attorney, so Bruce Bergum, sixteen forty-nine Seabreeze Drive, Tarpon Springs, three four six eight nine, and President/CEO of your hospital here in the community. Um, I was out of town last week, so I did not have the opportunity to enjoy the conversation that took place here at the City Council meeting regarding this event. Uh, quite frankly, I found out about this just a couple of weeks ago. Upon returning from my vacation, I asked to meet with this, uh, with Mark and with the mayor, and had some good meetings with Mark and- and the mayor. Uh, those were two separate meetings, and we understand, we had a- a good dialogue on that. My concern here is that the city, or pardon me, that the hospitals, and as, you know, Florida Hospital invested over forty-five million dollars into this institution. We have provided in two thousand and twelve, twenty-two million dollars of uncompensated care here in this community for the- for the benefit of the community, that we did- were not offered an opportunity to sit down with the city in a proactive way to understand what the goals were that you were attempting to achieve, i.e., increased wellness, increased access to primary care physicians, that that opportunity was never afforded to us. I mean, we are the largest employer in town. We have the, um, I mean, we have been here in the community, and we probably have invested as much as any other business here in the community. I would like to address some of the issues, or some of the statements that have been raised about the potential savings of this, uh, this, um, the- the clinic operation. How, in my opinion, how you're increasing access for- or you're encouraging access for employees to access primary care physicians, and really, that's all you are doing here is you're creating a primary care physician clinic, you know, four walls and a doctor, is you are waiving the co-pay that currently a United member has to pay when they go to another community physician, be it one of my employees' physicians or another primary care in the community. If they go there today, they have to pay a thirty-five dollar co-pay, I believe it's thirty-five dollars, uh, and you're offering additional, um, med- uh, pharmacy benefits. So clearly, those are- those are benefit plan modifications that you've made specific to this clinic. Currently, that's not in your benefit plan. So certainly, that will drive increased utilization, because you've made the- the playing field not equal. I- I- I would cha- I would, uh, suggest to you that if you were to waive that co-pay for your existing, uh, employees to access primary care, that you would see an increase in utilization. You know, additionally, let's talk about the savings that's been suggested here. You know, and last evening, I had the opportunity to visit with the two gentlemen for about an hour, and I asked them point blank, "Is the savings that you- that is being discussed in the newspaper here, is that savings that is achieved through early identification and early treatment of- of disease or illness?" And if- I believe I'm correct in quoting you, that that is the majority of the savings. So, you're shaking your head, "No." Well, I- I- I'll let you come back and address that. So that's- that's what I understood to be said last evening. Which- which I think within the- the framework of, or within the, um, industry, healthcare, that is how savings are achieved. Certainly, there's some, uh, savings will be achieved by encouraging, you know, by not, uh, charging the employees to, uh, access the healthcare, but that char- that cost is going to be rolled into your premium in year two. Certainly, the lease cost is something that, uh, you're going to be absorbing this year directly. You know, I offered and proposed to the clinic and to, um, the League of Cities, the opportunity to work with community physicians here in this community. We would waive that co-pay, and, uh, we can't, you know, we don't have a mechanism today to address the pharmacy benefits that you're offering. And we would, uh, offer the use of our existing clinics free of charge. So that offer was offered to them, and, uh, as that, you know, I believe I'm correct in- in representing that they said that that's probably something that they would not be, uh, willing to pursue with their trust, that that would not be something that looked on in favor. So, but we did put that offer, uh, before the Mark and, uh, and the mayor, so, you know, that- that was something else that we offered to do that. So, again, what I was hoping to accomplish by meeting with, uh, you know, the officials, the commissioners and speaking commissioners, is the opportunity to put this decision on pause for thirty days, allow us to sit down with the seat- city leadership and with, uh, you know, the League of Cities and the- and ATC, and to see if we can form a relationship that would allow these dollars to stay here in the community. I don't believe that my request is an unreasonable request. You know, again, I don't want to- I- I- I just want to, you know, I just want to be clear, we've invested, including uncompen- uncompensated care, over sixty-five million dollars toward the healthcare of this community, and I think at a minimum, there should be a little bit of consideration to work with your largest employer, your hospital that has been around since nineteen twenty-seven. So, um, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Uh, Mr., what we'll do is we'll go to the next individual that might have public comment.
Okay.
Mike Pescudis, uh, six two three East- East Tarpon Avenue. I apologize, uh, my vanity requires me to wear cheaters, um, and, um, so, let you know that upfront. I'm here- I'm here for two reasons. One is a hospital board member, and- and the second reason I'm here is as a business owner, uh, multiple businesses, a resident and taxpayer of Tarpon Springs. Last week, I was here as a hos- as a representative of the hospital to listen to a presentation regarding a medical clinic that- that, uh, that, uh, that was proposed through the League of Cities. The CEO, Bruce, as we spoke earlier, Bergum, uh, told me several weeks ago that- that the city was looking at a clinic, and that he had reached out to the city to see if- if the Florida Hospital can get involved. Um, for one reason or another, that never materialized. Uh, when I attended the meeting- I was livid, um, to find out that you were already negotiating a contract. Um, you know, I'm not here to debate whether an RFP was necessary or not necessary. I understand that when the city negotiates its medical plan, it's not required to have an RFP. Um, you know, I looked at the city's webs-, website and procurement, and, you know, there's, there's a thing that the city does publish on its website, that says, you know, uh, that values of, and guiding principles of public procurement. And, and I think when the city ended up getting a healthcare plan, I, I believe it was done without an RFP, but, but going back to, to, to what the gentleman said earlier, is by having, having, or should have having this stuff go out for an RFP, um, in your own website, it provides, you want open access to competitive opportunities. And I don't think that was ever afforded, uh, just comparing policies, um, but, you know, that, that's for another day. Um, I've been told time and time again, that the hospital cannot match the Florida League of Cities' plan, um, even though I don't think anybody asked. Um, and I listened to what they offer, and quite frankly, I believe, uh, Florida Hospital off-, offers the same, if not a better, program. Nevertheless, uh, during the past week, I've met with the mayor and the city manager, and I wanna thank you, you both expressed your appreciation of the hospital, um, and its commitment to the hospital, and, and the, the hospital has appreciated this board, and this commission, and the city manager, and its commitment to the city. It, it, it has shown its commitment to the city, um, to the dollars that's invested in this, in this community. Um, we also talked about, um, to see if there was an effort that the hospital could, could work with the Florida League of Cities to enhance the plan that currently presented. Um, my understanding is that the, the Florida League or whoever ACT, I believe that's the acronym, um, uh, was, you know, at this point, is not interested in, in, in partnering in that regard, with regard to primary care. Uh, they did not wanna deviate from their model. In listening to their presentation, they did deviate from their model. They deviated from their model when, you know, the, the city of Clearwater decided to go and, to have its own imaging program. So they did deviate from their model, okay? And I would ask them, I, I, I would assure you that your model's probably a very good model, but the question is, can you improve it? Is there an opportunity that, that, that Florida Hospital has to sit down with you and improve your model? I don't know if it's perfect, but I'm sure it can be improved. Um, I had a, um, a list of questions and, 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 uh, with regard to the medical services, continuity of care, medical records, and those have been addressed, and I thank them for addressing those. But I also have come to understand, you know, everybody's calling it a clinic, but it's not a clinic, it's a creation of a medical practice, uh, outside of this community, which is setting up, as they describe, their own network of specialties, referring physicians, um, that will directly compete with the doctors in this community, possibly compete with the hospital, which pays rent to the city, which provides over twenty-two million dollars of, of uncompensated healthcare, um, has invested, as, as Bruce said, over, uh, forty-five million dollars in, in, in the city as well. Um, everybody wants what's best for the city, and everybody wants what's best for the employees. I am a resident, a business owner, taxpayer. Every employee that works for the city is paid with tax dollars that the business and residents of this community provide. No matter what the explanations are that are given today, the city is going to open up a business with money that is not being spent here, and taking our tax dollars out of town. I have a problem with that. Um, now, if you can look in the camera, and you tell these, the taxpayers, the businesses of this community, that you don't have a problem sending tax dollars out of this community to set up a, a hospital prac-, I mean, a, a physician practice. I understand that the citizens, I mean, the, the employees of Dunedin are very gracious and thankful that they have a program. But I would question if you asked the residents of Dunedin, that the tax dollars that they're spending are going to Clearwater, if they would feel the same way. Um, the city has a development director whose job is to attract businesses to the city. We have a chamber of commerce that promotes the use of local businesses.
If you could, uh...
I'm winding it up.
Yes, okay.
Um, yet, our, our city is looking outside its limits to create a startup medical practice outside of this city. The reasons are right, I think the, the process is, is wrong, or the approach is wrong. Out of respect for the hospital, I request that the commission allow the hospital to sit down with it, with, with the, uh, the, uh, the partners here, and, and see if they can work out something in conjunction. Um, I don't know why it can't be in writing before. They said that, uh, in, in their presentation, that, uh, um, they wait immediately after they sign a contract, they go into negotiation. Would it be wise to look at the dollars they can save going in, and, and, and say what pricing they can get before they enter into a contract? Um, I, I think if the city move forward with this con-, contract at this time, the ability to partner might be lost. Um, but I also, in, in closing up, I wanna thank you, Mayor, because in our discussion, we disagreed. And, uh, but I, I will say that the comment you made really, really, uh, hit hard. You said you didn't mind it because of the passion in, in arguing our position and what's best for the city. And I, I think I shared that with, with Mr., Mr. Larson as well. It's, I'm passionate about this community.
Tom Carson, twelve fifty-nine South Florida Avenue, business owner. Um, excuse me, what's the customary time limit, 'cause I could speak for like an hour?
Four minutes.
Four minutes, okay, four minutes. Um, all right, I wear several hats. Uh, I am the, uh, I, I am the owner and leader of the largest primary care practice in town, but I'll put that hat to the side, because, you know, you guys are posthumous, so I'll put it on the side. I'm mostly here as a board member of the hospital, and as a resident of Tarpon Springs. Um, and, uh, by the way, we do give thirty-minute appointments for your first visit, and if you take it, and we get people in the same day, so maybe you should change sockets. But, okay. Um, the, um, where do I start? I'd like to echo, you know, the comments that have been made. I'm, I'm very disturbed, as a citizen, to hear the process that you've already been offered a contract without any apparent, uh, attempt at a competitive bid. Um, and then, of course, as a citizen, I'm concerned that, again, having a, a viable, high-quality hospital in this, a city of this size, is nothing short of an incredible asset. Um, you know, many other cities this size wish they had a hospital this good. And to, and as you know, uh, we've been financially struggling for some time, and, um, looking at the glass half-empty, you're looking at the savings of a million dollars, but you're also looking at spending a million dollars. And as has been mentioned, that's a million dollars that will not be spent in this town. Now, we all know the geography of the situation here. Any money that gets spent in the Oldsmar, Dunedin, Clearwater corridor, medically speaking, is all in the same health system. Money that is earned here and spent there is changing to a different healthcare system. You know, there is a, and with the, with the sub-, with the, uh, consequential drain in employment taxes, et cetera, et cetera. Also, I'd like to make a provocative statement as a generic statement. It's, um, it's one of the great lies of the affor-, affordable healthcare sys-, uh, era, that preventive care saves money. Uh, to give good care costs money. And to say that you're gonna save the savings you, you, uh, incur by preventing things is, um, basically, the math just doesn't work for anybody who works in healthcare can tell you that. Uh, the real savings are in, uh, preventing duplicating, duplication of efforts and, and , uh, reducing defensive medicine and a few other things. Um, but anyway. Um, but, um, I'm disturbed to hear that Ms., Mr. Burgum has reasserted me that he is giving that, that HS can put together a comparable, uh, plan, and that you have chosen not to even hear it. So I am a little disturbed to hear that. Um... Let's see, I'm sure there's more I was gonna say, but obviously, I'm reasonably upset about this. And all I would ask is, again, to echo the other, uh, people's statements, that we could at least have a little more, um, open, uh, hearings about this, and a little more time to, um, hear some of the various issues. Thank you.
My name's Charles Samarcus, I'm Dr. Carson's neighbor. I live at eleven ten South Florida Avenue in Tarpon Springs, and I am also on the Board of Directors for the Helen Ellis Memorial Foundation and Support of Florida Hospital. Um, and I'm actually, if you'll excuse my attire tonight, because my daughter graduated last night from high school, and I got home late, and I got an email from Bruce around two o'clock, asking him to come down tonight, and I thought this was important enough to come down. I don't know the merits of what these gentlemen were saying, and I don't know what Bruce was saying, but I just wanna give you a very brief background of what got me involved in the hospital. I graduated from high school with Susan, I won't say the year, because it was a little while ago, although Irene's when you're older than me. Uh, I won't say that. Um, I have, I've seen the mayor at every event, I mean, I saw my graduation, the spring concert, banquet, elementary school. I see, you know, Commissioner Larson in church, I see Commissioner Terrapany around, and I haven't seen you before, and I see the chief everywhere. So, I know that this community is loved by the people that are on this bias right now, and the people that are making this vote. What I really don't understand, though, is when I heard that there's really not an opportunity to have a collaboration, sit down and to do a comparison, and see what happens. Because one of the things that I think is critical and vital, and frankly, you know, as Tom knows, I'm an attorney, and I practice at a sizable firm in Clearwater, and I've served on a board at Morton Plant. And when I was asked to serve on a board when Florida Hospital bought, bought this place, I said, "No way", because I have to believe in the product before I'm gonna do it. And I sat down with, um, Terry Smither, and then I met Bruce, and I saw the Florida Hospital commitment, and I thought, "This is a first-class organization". And my parents were going to Mees, and my healthcare plan was in Dunedin, and I go to Clearwater, my children born in Clearwater. But when I started serving on the board, and I saw the commitment from doctors like Dr. Carson and other local doctors, when my parents needed healthcare services, I said, "Let's stay in the town". And they, when they needed services, unfortunately recently, they would go into the town. I've seen this hospital make millions and millions of dollars of commitment, and so when I hear that they just want an opportunity to be heard, to sit down with what I believe are very reasonable people, that have a commitment that's probably greater than mine to this town for certain, and probably everybody else, I think that makes a lot of sense, especially when it'll benefit. I know everybody is reasonable. One of the things, and I recently have become a business owner in Tarpon, because my wife and I bought an old house, and it was called the nineteen-ten Inn. I say that I own part of it, but it's really my wife's business, and I once in a while write a check. But one of the things that I didn't realize that was gonna happen is that Florida Hospital brought in this cancer specialist, Dr. Rankin, and Dr. Rankin now is doing cancer surgeries at the hospital. We have now had people come from out of town, from Sarasota and other places, to come to Tarpon Springs and stay in our inn, which is a nice benefit. And then they see our community in town, they meet other people, and they want to come back. I never realized that the hospital was doing anything other than providing for the people in Tarpon. But I've seen that now as a local business owner, and, okay, maybe I made a few hundred bucks now in my pocket off of them, but I believe that they are making an investment in our town that is greater than just the people that they employ. It's greater than the people that they are serving, but it is helping our community as a whole. So, I don't know right or wrong, their plan, whose plan is better. I would just ask you, as a resident, as somebody that loves the town, and somebody that believes in Florida Hospital, and Bruce, and Paul Hoover, and the folks that are with Florida Hospital, to allow them the opportunity to sit down, negotiate, and then if it doesn't work out, at least everybody gave it a shot. But I thank you for your time and attention, and I appreciate your consideration.
My name is John Terrapany, twenty-two North Spring Boulevard. I'm here also because I received an email this afternoon from the hospital administrator asking the, the foundation to come and, and speak before you tonight. Um, life is full of perspectives, and I can tell you that at one time, I was, not too long ago, a young man sitting where you are, if you consider thirty-eight years ago, uh, a short period of time. And one of the first things I, I did as, as a young commissioner was to, the foundation at the time asked me to appear before state boards for a certificate of need to increase the beds at the hospital. Um, and I did that. And after that, I served as chairman of the Health Facilities Authority, and I currently sit on the foundation. So, I have a unique perspective that I've sat in all the positions of the healthcare in, in Tarpon Springs. The hospital has been in existence providing continuous care since nineteen twenty-seven. It's had its ups, it's had its downs, but I can tell you, right now, it is a world-class or-, organization that's bringing world-class, and when Mr. Samarcus, uh, mentioned Dr. Rankin, you can Google his name, he's a world-class surgeon that brings many people to Tarpon Springs, and the piece that's missing on my chin, he has in his office. Um, so, I'm a big fan of Dr. Rankin. Um, like some of the other speakers, I, I don't know whether the Florida League of Cities' plan is the best plan, or the city, or the, a hospital can't offer you the best plan. What I do know, there hasn't been an opportunity to determine which is the best plan, or it, or a combination, a joint venture of plans. I would like to ask, has the internal auditor been given a task to evaluate the plan side by side, and give the commission his or her input as to the, um, how the numbers work and break out? I would also say that it's my understanding that the city of Dunedin and the city of Clearwater do not receive three hundred thousand dollars a year from either Mees or Morton Plant into their budgets. Um, and the money that Mees and Morton Plant invest in their plant, their buildings, are not owned by the, the city of Dunedin or the city of Clearwater. That building, the air conditioners, the physical plant, the land, is owned by the city of Tarpon Springs. The proposal, it seems to me, is you're going into competition with yourself. Um, and I don't always think that the, while I admire the city manager for looking to, um, get the best cost savings that, that you can for the city, um, for the budget reasons, sometimes there's a bigger, um, goal, and that's the, the well-being of the community. And the well-being of this community is tied directly to the well-being of Florida Hospital's North Pinellas. Um, so, what we're here to do is ask you to just, um, give a little time, let the parties get together, a thirty-day extension. We're not saying kick these guys out of town, or, you know, take the deal, take this deal, take that deal. Everybody's saying just make it an even playing field, and let Florida Hospitals have an opportunity. Thank you.
Good evening, Facial Facless, uh, one thirty-nine East Tarpon Avenue. Um, I don't wanna repeat everything that everybody said, because I'm in agreement, uh, with what Mr. Terrapany said, and what, uh, Mr. Samarcus said. Um, I'm also on the founda-, foundation board of the hospital, and was, uh, received the same email, and I've, I'm also in the healthcare field, so I understand what all parties are trying to do, and I, I under-, I understand, and I think it's definitely a plus for the city and for the employees. But I definitely agree that, um, Mr. Burgum is not, you know, his request is not unreasonable. And I get up here a lot and come and talk to you about, you know, local businesses having a, you know, uh, the nostalgia of owning a business here for a hundred years, and, uh, maybe I get up here and talk about that a lot. But we are a unique community. We are a unique community that, um, focuses around, um, small businesses and buying local, spend local. We have, I believe, the city manager has shot at Tarpon Springs first on the back of his, his car, um, the campaign, and I think that's wonderful. Um, and I know this is, uh, maybe something, uh, larger that we're... And I know this is maybe something larger that we're looking at, but give this hospital a chance. That's all we're asking. Let us come to the table together, because what's built this hospital, you know, thank God that the Adventist healthcare system has come here and spent this money and is building this first-class healthcare facility here. But the local organizations and the people that have donated to this hospital to keep it going throughout the years are endless. This is our hospital, and we're blessed in this community. So it is a unique situation, and I do ask that we just sit down with them and give them a chance, and let's see if we can work out something. I'm sure we can. I know we can work something, and as Mr., as Mike Scutis said, you know, possibly, we can improve on this. So I thank you, and I hope you, you know, let's take the time and consider how we can bring all parties together and do something better for Tarpon Springs. Let's be, let's be in the forefront. Let's see if we can do, create an even better mile. I think we can. Thank you.
Paul Donovan, eight-five-eight, Briar Road, Corde, Tarpon Springs, three-four-sixty-nine. Like so many of the people just spoke before me, I am also a foundation board member on the hospital and a local business owner. I own Donovan Insurance Brokerage. I've been an insurance broker for twenty-seven years. And understand about, you know, how you build trust with clients, and it all comes down to transparency. And so with transparency, but unlike some of my other competitors, I don't bid. I never bid. And the reason I don't bid, and try to tell a contractor you don't bid with insurance, or try to tell a commissioners on a city that you don't bid. And the reason is, it's all about relationships. Relationships and trust. And that's really what we have here with the hospital. They have come in, and they have provided an immense opportunity for Tarpon Springs residents, as well as every business and every resident here. I think that to allow that thirty-day asking time would be so pivotal to helping build trust in our city. And not that we don't trust people, but I think it's just transparency will help foster that. I think that as a business owner, I too would love to see the city and the hospital, continue to do business and improve the services, as Mike said. But that's all I wanted to say, is that it's all about a relationship. We have a great, a longstanding relationship for this hospital. And just to give us an opportunity to have a discussion, to see if it makes sense, and there's a good fit still. And I think there's always gonna be a good fit. I'll tell you just a quick example. My wife took a horrible spill the weekend before Mother's Day. Happened to be a workers' comp accident. And so what was the first thing that happened? We had to go to an emergency room. And I have not used, because of the previous reputation, and having the good fortune not to have to use the hospital services, I've not used our local hospital. I always took and drove my kids and myself or others down to Mees Countryside, because the reputation of the hospital just wasn't there. And we all, if you've been a resident here, you know that. But it is vastly improved. So what I did is I took our, my wife to the emergency room. The best service I've ever had, the best I've ever had. And we've had multiple dings. I have two boys, you know, and we've grown up getting dinged and scratched and cut and broken, you know what? And so having my wife go there, the compassion, the care, par, you know, excellence, excellence. And I think that's the term I would say, is I was so impressed, I have no hesitation of recommending our hospital to anybody. So just another dialogue, if you will, just to consider that. Thank you.
I just have thirty seconds for a few more comments, please. Couple things, I was mentioning about our lease. Presently, we are providing pre-employment physicals, and we're doing the workers' comp. That is built into our lease, yes it is, but we're doing that free of charge. So again, that's an additional service that we are providing for the city. Secondly, I am not asking the city, nor would I presume that they should subsidize the care at a higher cost than what you could procure with this relationship. What I'm asking is to be allowed to provide this care on an equal footing. And then finally, we do have an insurance product. Florida Hospital does own a insurance company here in this state. So if that's something that is the city, Mark, you're interested in pursuing, we can bring them to the table and have that conversation with you and see if we can put together a comprehensive wellness plan, primary care plan, a total package. And again, we would be happy to do that, but again, we need time to be able to pull the party together. So I would again ask, ladies and gentlemen, that you allow us, show your confidence in this hospital, show your commitment to its long-going, its longevity, and let's work together in a proactive manner. Thank you.
Thank you. There's just some questions, and I'm gonna ask the attorney to answer that. But one of the things I want to just say flat out, I believe that we have the best hospital around. I understand about first class, the rest of that. This started out being one of what can we do as far as health plan is concerned for the city's employees? How can we reduce costs and give them better services? Sometime I'd like for Mr. Austin to come up and talk about the wellness plan that we already have in place with our insurance company. So those type of things, I want everyone to know that this is not about us against the hospital and not wanting them to be involved. And I know Mr. Bergen will tell you that they presented us something. We sat down and we talked about it. We sent this to Mr. Austin, had him to look at it. We talked about negotiations. We set up a conference call with Care ACT, the hospital, to go over what they had proposed and to try to work with them. This is all we've tried to do from day one, since he came and got involved in what we're doing to say, hey, but this is not about whether we support the hospital or not. And those that know me know that, hey, when I speak to you privately, I'm not gonna tell you something and come back and tell you something publicly. I don't want to talk really about taking money outside of the community. You know, I've been involved, and I'll tell you, the hospital has world-class care, but we're talking about a corporation too. Y'all know how that thing was set up from the start, as far as one board, two boards, you know, who's gonna do what, when, where, trying to get this together. So I've been here, I've been involved, I know what we got going with the hospital. They're valuable assets, but please, this is not about the hospital and the type of care that they are presenting. It's about our employees and their healthcare coverage, period. I've gone on record, and I say this here to Care ACT, the Florida League and the rest. And I expect that if the hospital presents something comparable, that we will look at trying to work with them as much as possible. I'd like for Mr. Austin to talk about the possibility of doing wellness and education, the rest of that with the hospital. We wanna connect with the hospital. But make no mistake about it now, when we talk about the hospital, we're not talking about investing money that's gonna come back into the community. We're talking about trying to make the hospital viable. So let's not talk about the hospital like they are a local entity, like a physician, or a small business and the rest of that. So let's just keep things just on the up and up as far as how we are looking at presenting this. And, you know, that's the way that I'm gonna be. And I told y'all, that's the way I am all the time, you know? This is about employees, healthcare, how can we get that done? And then how can we also help an entity that I believe is the best? So as we look at trying to answer some of those questions that was asked, and the one about the savings, is it just one that it's because of people not having catastrophic illnesses, those type of things? Are there other savings? We can talk about that if you want to talk about the right of the city to enter into this type of agreement with an insurance carrier that we already have that's providing an additional service. And when I say that, I just want to say this, that I appreciate every one of the individuals that have come and spoken. I respect all of you. And that would normally make it tougher, because you're looking at people that you do respect and the rest of it. And I want you to know that, hey, we have been talking with the hospital, and we have been looking at negotiating, and we have been looking at trying to do something that would benefit the hospital itself. But one of the things that Mr. Donovan talked about is relationship and trust. And it's not only relationship and trust with the hospital, it's relationship and trust with the carrier that we have in the Florida League and what they've done. And if any of y'all have been in the audience, when they look at bringing us back a check for the premiums that we cut, I don't know too many insurance programs that you're gonna have, that you pay premiums, and they give you a refund back. So we are talking about a relationship that we have, and we're talking about adding on to something. So these are two separate things. And I'm hoping that when we get ready to look at this and make a decision one way or the other, that's what we're talking about. And I would hope that Mr. Austin would also talk about somewhat of the urgency that presents itself in trying to move ahead and get some things done as far as for our employees for this year. So I don't know, attorney, if you want to talk in terms of that, and if you can come up and talk about the other aspects, and any other questions that we might have.
Okay, Mayor, I think you hit it right on the head. The question isn't, you know, whether or not you're gonna, this is, should you put this out to an RFP for insurance services? You have a current insurance carrier. And the question here is, are you gonna enter into a contract that allows for additional benefits to be provided by your own insurance carrier? That's what you're really talking about. There's no legal requirement under your city code to put it out for an RFP? There's no legal requirement or state statute to put it out for RFP? You have every absolute legal right to do what you're doing tonight, to consider approval of this agreement. So hopefully, I've answered the speaker's questions, but there is, there is no impediment for you to move forward tonight on the contract.
I appreciate it. I wanna, I wanna just go over so we understand what the league is and what our wellness initiative is and how that started. The Florida League of Cities itself, actually, we provide advocacy for every municipality as a member. And every municipality and every city in the state of Florida is a member of the Florida League of Cities. That outreach is done out of Tallahassee. Some of y'all might have been involved in some of the outreach we've done and some of the legislative work that we've done to help save taxpayer dollars is what we're doing within each city, and helping you keep your home rule rights within the city itself. So just please, please keep that in mind on that side of it. The mayor also spoke to how we operate and that, you know, we have nothing to gain by this pilot program going in place in this municipality. We chose the area because it was a good area, and it was an area that I knew between the two cities that we needed to up the healthcare and up the access to that piece of it. So just know that that's where that came from. I want to speak a little bit to our wellness initiative called Hometown Health. Hometown Health has been in place for a little over a year now. Tarpon Springs was actually one of the early adopters of Hometown Health. Hometown Health is paid for by the Florida League of Cities. We came in and we have ran fully funded screening programs within the city. We screened over a hundred and fifteen of your employees. That's a, that's a very good, that's a good hit number for something like that. One of the big reasons is because we fully funded, the league fully funded the incentive program to get them to come in. So when you give somebody a twenty-five-dollar gift card, they usually show up. So we did that piece of it. They also qualify for another fifty-dollar gift card if they complete certain measures to look further into their, into their health. Each member that completed the health assessment onsite here was contacted by a health coach. So they have access to a live health coach that knows who they are over a period of time. And several of your, several of your employees have built relationships with those health coaches, and we actually have some very good success stories that we've shared with your administration here. The custom health promotion website that we partnered with WebMD for the entire League of Cities is in place. Your population here has about a forty percent hit on the website itself. So we know those statistics to be true, and we know that the outreach has worked. We do continue to outreach with a Florida League of Cities employee. She's a master's in public health. You have access to her whenever you need her in. She works with your administration here internally on setting up a holistic approach to wellness and what the city does. This is a, this is definitely a proven method. I will, I brag a little bit about it, that we did get it in place for all of our membership. I do need to pass on a little bit of credit to the Association of Washington Cities, who has run this program for over twenty-seven years. And we're kind enough to share that with the Florida League of Cities to get it put in place. And then, once again, the financial support from the Florida League of Cities as it relates to Hometown Health. As a HIPAA compliant program, we will continue to help reduce total program costs within the wellness program itself. It is established, and I'm hoping we're seeing, we're seeing the endeavors pay off this year and in future years. And it rolls right along with what we're trying to accomplish with the Wellness Center as well.
Is there any urgency as it relates to?
Yes, so when we, the reason I gave you a little background on how we chose the area, we started this process, oof, I wanna go, I wanna, well, yeah, maybe in August is when we started this process. The idea was to get the, to get the center set up so it would run concurrent with the way that the league actually sets your rates from year to year. And we needed that for several reasons. One of the big reasons is, once it's in place and you start realizing that savings amount, I want to have a full year of that to be able to pick up and make up for what that setup cost was or make up for whatever supplies go in place, and to catch up to that, to start showing that savings on the health plan. By putting it off, what ends up happening is, you don't have time for the decreased claims cost to catch up. So it's actually costing the city a little more money for what you guys do. And at the end of the day, I'm gonna do what you guys ask me to do. I'm a league employee, and that's where we start from. We wouldn't have been here, we wouldn't have been here if it wasn't for the league trying to do something, so an initiative that we believe is actually gonna help. So if we put this thing off for thirty days, I can assure you that I would have to go back to my board and get approval to be able to subsidize this plan, to be able to do it. My approval would not happen with our board. It's just, I'm positive of that. And so putting something off for thirty days, to me, I don't, I don't, I'm not gonna speak for what we might accomplish or what we might not, but I will, I do want to point out that the city itself would lose some of the savings on that side of it over a period of time.
I think another thing I want you to point out is, as we keep talking about this thirty days, and we forgot, in all of the discussions that I've heard, and I want everybody in the public and everybody in the audience to understand, there's another point that's been glossed over in this whole thing. There is a reason why all the successful cities, and the commission has got the articles, the land, Sanford, all the cities in the state, there's one reason why it's successful. It's one reason why the city saves taxpayers' money. Remember, when you talk about taxpayers' money, if our health insurance goes up eight to ten percent for the next three years, who is paying for that increase? The taxpayers. But there's one reason it works in all these cities. And there's one reason why there are no hospitals involved with doing this. It's because this whole system is based on not submitting claims to the insurance. And in everything that we've talked to at Florida Hospital, everything to premise, in fact, I don't think until the last meeting they believed, I mean, it was almost a great non-belief, they can't be doing it without submitting claims. Anything you see for any of the proposals and stuff for the hospital, it's gonna involve- Anything you see for any of the proposals and stuff for the hospital, it's gonna involve them submitting claims. If you're gonna submit claims to our insurance company, we're not gonna save the money on the other end and it's not gonna be successful. That's why you see, you know, Care ATC, uh, I forget what the name of the company out of Tennessee that does a lot of the ones in Sanford, Ovita. I forget, but there are a bunch of initials too and stuff, why they're doing them. There are no claims submitted. You do not get claims submitted to your insurance. It's simple. We as an employee today, Irene, you know, can witness stuff, says, why do the people understand that the big difference from what the hospital wants to do and what this and a Florida League wants to do is, it's simple. You don't submit claims, you're gonna get better rates on your insurance and save the taxpayers' money. It's that when you break all this down and all this argument, it's a simple present. Why wouldn't you call the hospital table? Why wouldn't you do all this stuff? Well, none of the other places have had it because obviously you're stopping a generation of claims. That's why this works. That's why, as our representative up here, and I want to make sure everybody in the audience understands too, these aren't just strangers that want to bid or do anything. The Florida League of Cities has told you what they do and represent us. And they have saved us money and loved, they have saved the city so much money over the years. And also, and I don't know if you have that, Mayor mentioned, we are pretty regular on getting checks because if there is money back from our premium, they refund us every year for checks. So again, that doesn't happen. These are our partners for a long time. Not that the hospital isn't, but these are a bunch of strangers we're going out of town and doing with. But remember, they're not submitting claims to the insurance. That's what generates and makes this work. The thirty days isn't gonna change the fact of whatever negotiated on that claims issue. The thirty days is something that they can work with them, they can work to see about these contracts that you wrote. Because this thing needs to be passed because in thirty days, you're not gonna negotiate a system where, for instance, you can give the auditor, order to look at this plan and look at the other ones. Well, it's not apples and oranges because one involves submitting claims and the other one doesn't. So it's not a thing that's, we're just sitting and waiting for the hospital's proposal and see what they're gonna do because nowhere in the thing do we have the non-generation of claims. Um, a major reason why we're in this time crunch and I want them to understand is the good job of your attorneys. You've got a good attorney from Oldsmar and this has been a long time negotiating the contract. But this would have been to you a lot sooner and going because we originally wanted to have this up April first. We were hoping to get this maybe up. But obviously the attorneys had to work and make sure that the cities were covered, that, uh, all bases were covered, that if a thing goes awry, that the city would have the least amount of liabilities. It's been a long time and we're way past our goal again to see what our claims are because I think you need to talk a little bit because I've even talked to the commission today, this second and third year and to worry about it getting rolled into us, how the sooner we get this started and the sooner we produce those savings, um, that money that we think we're gonna commit in year two could be drastically down zero or hundred thousand plus in the plus column, depending on the usage. That's why I wish we were starting April first. But I don't see thirty days as doing anything of, of, you know, negotiation can occur with this contract going because that would, what it would have to be, it would have to be something worked out, um, with agreement on the side. But this contract would have to be in place anyway of the Wellness Center. There is not a negotiation to another deal because of the claims generation. So, you know, if anything you want to elaborate on that and put it clearly out there, that, you know, there's nothing we could do in the thirty days that's gonna change us from being here today or where we're gonna be in thirty days. Because you can't make that commitment, um, the commitment is this one. And we can't commit to put a doctor from one system without another system, you know? All of that will not work. So I think this board really needs, you know, we hope to give this, our employees, you know, doing this benefit. They've been waiting for it. Delays which could delay the opening clinic October were, it's just, we need to get these benefits to the employees. And everywhere, as you saw in the articles, you saw written in the articles that in places around the state where the hospital system has been skeptical, that it's actually produced more for those local hospitals. Obviously you've got the city of Clearwater with Morton Plant where I was born and everybody's been around a long time. You don't see all this there. Tampa, all the fine hospitals you got in Tampa, Tampa's got this wellness clinic, but it's not there. All the other places in central Florida, in the, in the heart of Florida Hospital are running this way. And again, it's all because of the non-generation of claims. We need to get our employees to be able to walk into the clinic August first, getting the benefits of this, moving on it. And while we're getting this set up and doing it, we've already committed, the mayor has committed. I think we're on record, and obviously I'm, I'm glad some of the people speaking have acknowledged that, uh, you won't, you know, there will be no argument on people like myself and the mayor and their commitment to this city and making this commit, uh, this city viable and bringing business in there because I think our records are impeccable and you'll be in for a real war if you try to dispute that. And I appreciate the people who acknowledged that tonight. But, but it's not about it, that if I thought it was gonna take away local business in the hospital, we wouldn't do it. It's not, I think it's a long way, it's gonna enhance people involved in healthcare and again, give the employees a chance to choose and hopefully not only working with Care ATC, but I've offered the hospital work in more with our HR to, to work on getting information, um, you know, when I was involved in a situation where I had sleep apnea, there was one, only one place to go and that was, that was, um, East Countryside. Now we've got one here, you know, to get that word out, you don't have to go there if you've got a sleep problem or sleep apnea. You've got that here getting that word out. We can do that not only through Care ATC, but through our HR here in the commitment of partnership. But this partnership needs to be in conjunction with this clinic, not opposed to it, not vying against it, not pulling things up for the clinic. And for the employees of this city, I implore you to make the decision tonight and to, and to get this clinic started. And I assure you, and if I don't do the job, then you know what you can do immediately, but that we will work every way we can, um, with the hospital and with the resources to exactly what we want to do tonight and, uh, make it a situation where everybody wants to do it.
I, um, I'll take a minute to, to answer one of those things and then I'm gonna call Don when there's back up here to, uh, to answer a couple more of them. But, uh, I do want to talk about the, um, about the second year and third year, uh, cost of this. So as I said before, the league believes in it enough to front money for this, okay? So as you move through, we move through that first year, your renewal is on October first of every year. Goes along with fiscal cycle here. So we know that that's gonna come up. We have to collect claims. There's lag, there's a lag in those claims of when you can get claims from, uh, from the carrier, which is United Healthcare. And, uh, I have to have that twelve months to be able to set that piece of it. So what, what I want to point out with the, with the clinic itself and what that, what that cost pass through is, is everything that we've shown and everything that we've, that, that, that we've betted through the process as well, was we know our cost whenever somebody walks into, walks in to see a primary care physician. I know that piece of it under, under the healthcare program because we are the administrator of it. We know that if, if that clinic stays at eighty percent, eighty percent capacity and eighty percent capacity continues for the year, we know we've done more than break even at that level versus where the claims are currently. So I know that piece of it coming in. So your chances on first year of, of even having a payment roll in here for the, uh, for the clinic and that being put in the rate, for that to happen, you have to have awful, awful participation. And even if you didn't, even if for some reason the participation was bad in this clinic, it wouldn't be that bad. It's not to the extent of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars that you'd be, you'd be looking at for that piece of it. So, you know, our projections are a lot more than that for, for the savings on that. But that's been an eighty percent capacity of that clinic. If we expand those hours, we start moving that scale a lot further apart too. So just keep that peace and, peace of, uh, that, uh, peace of mind whenever you're looking at this, at the, uh, at the running of it. So you'll go into year two. So we're starting year two and we're running this thing for year two. You've got recognition of the clinic. You've got people using it. You have a lot more people coming into it. Um, you start adding on to what that savings piece is versus what your claims are because you will hit capacity on that thing. I, 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 I imagine second year we're expanding hours. We're, we're gonna probably about be forced to. And that's happened at every, every place that they, that they've worked in and that I've looked at across the state. So where they started off with a little less than, than where they're at currently, and that goes into second year. So you have that coming back to you. Now, there was a little talk about, about the, um, about the large claims and the impact of that piece of it. Absolutely. If we keep somebody out of the hospital and we catch something early, yeah, it does save on claims. Guess what? We probably also save somebody's life. And to me, on that piece of it, to be able to do that, that's what actually speaks to me a little more than, than just the, just the financial side of it. But it's there definitely because I deal with it as administrator of a trust and I get phone calls I don't want sometimes. And, um, I, I, that's kind of where my, my passion is with this and why we even brought it up, uh, through the league itself. So what I'm gonna have, um, what am I have Don do is just go over the, uh, the process of it and, uh, have, uh, have him answer some of, uh, Mr. LeBorde's questions.
I, um, I want to be careful not to get back and forth with, with anyone in here. We are, we look forward to the hospital as a partnership. We, we tried to make that clear last night, we had a very good conversation. Uh, this is a little different. We usually come in and we are going toward that partnership right off the bat. Maybe it's because sometimes when you do go to full RFP, the hospitals have a choice in some of these areas that we're spoken to earlier and they didn't make the final cut. It's just a different model, it's a different way of doing businesses that they're not set up to do. They do very well what they do. We don't want to get in that. We do very well under this model. And, um, a couple of things we talked about with the savings, if so, if we open the Wellness Center, we're probably sixty days or so, maybe a little less from the time the contract's signed because we actually build out per million, et cetera. So we're sixty days, we'll push hard for August first if it goes through, but we're, uh, we are limited as to per million, et cetera, that we have a little control over. But in the, if someone, if we open August first and someone has a heart attack August second, November, that probably is gonna happen regardless, of course, whether the Wellness Center's in place or not. It takes maybe eighteen months to twenty-four months to have an impact on some of the larger claims, to have that impact. To turn someone around, if they're right on the ledge, about to jump off, we get it, we try to get them to take a few steps back. It does take some time to realize some of those claims. It ha, it has happened in every client we have. We started in nineteen ninety-eight. We have sixty Wellness Centers up and running today, about sixty-five plus thousand patients as we speak right now. We made some mistakes along the way. It's not something that you start off with. You do grow. Someone mentioned earlier, we could get better. We've gotten a lot better in the last fifteen years. We continue to grow even with Clearwater in Tampa. We learned some procedures there that we, that is now part of our best practice. So we continue to grow and to continue to learn, but we, uh, listen to that and we implement it as soon as possible. Some of the earlier savings will come through the prescriptions. That's one area. Uh, very significant, uh, savings will come through prescriptions. And through the labs, we have again a national contract with LabCorp. And one other thing, it's the pass-through cost. Uh, when we purchase a prescription in wholesale, it's reimbursed that same cost. Our, our financial gain is through our administrative fee. Everything else is passed through. Whatever it costs for the doctor on hourly basis, that's what will be charged. Uh, so when we look at the lab, we did talk last night with the hospital, if they could provide prescriptions or labs and they just said, uh, it was not, you're not set up right now to do prescriptions. And the labs, they couldn't compete with LabCorp. And that's where some of the earlier savings comes from. Also what Clay mentioned too, just with the cost points that we have versus what's in the system when you, someone comes and sees a, a primary care provider and a claim is generated, there's potential savings there. One thing that's said too, that we went outside of our model when we negotiated for x-ray, that is our model. We only have one facility that has an x-ray machine in it because it's less expensive to negotiate out. Even Tampa with ten thousand members, ten thousand patients, they do not have an x-ray facility onsite. We have a room set aside for it if we get to that point. We simply look at utilization, how many x-rays we send out. And at some point, if it makes sense to go and lease an x-ray machine and hire an x-ray technician, we will. But it is our model to go and negotiate for imaging, for physical therapy, for all those other services that we need. And that's what we talked about tonight and what Wendy mentioned, the first call will be as soon as the contract's in place, is to sit down with the hospital and perhaps among others. It's hard to negotiate before a contract's in place. It's hard for us to spend the time and resources and it's hard to go to someone and negotiate when you have not got a, a start date or even a contract. It's hard to get them interested as well. So it has always been, we wait for the contract to sign, be signed so we know what we're dealing with as far as number of employees, number of hours, et cetera. Then we go and start the negotiation process. We only look out for our clients. Uh, if we can save money, we will. If we can't, we'll send them through the system as it is now. There's no financial gain for us to, to negotiate a contract with a local provider or a hospital. There's no financial gain for us, only if it helps the bottom line, would we do that. And that's, that's our, uh, the extent of our interest in doing so. The other thing too, just to say one other time, the hospital is still part of the United Healthcare Network. We're, we're certainly not trying to take over for the hospital. They have access to everything provided through the, the hospital offers and, and again, for twelve hours a week, it's open. There's still plenty of time that they'll need to access their plan. Something says, what happens if I get sick on, in one of the, at night or when the clinic's not open, Wellness Center's not open, you use your, your, your insurance plan, just like you would now. So by scheduling these appointments, it reduces emergency room costs, it reduces specialists because our physicians can spend more time with them. But we still will be, will need all the specialists and services that the, or many of the specialists and services that the hospital provides along with others. But we are committed to speaking with the hospital first because we know how important it is in this community. We can't commit, but that'll be our exclusive provider.
Wendy, I know there's a couple of things that you wanted to, is there something up here, Dr. Rowan?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask if, if Dr. Rowan could provide this perspective, having come from the primary care, uh, in the, in the private sector and now working for Care ATC since August of last year at, um, Clearwater in Dunedin facility. We did, um, add Dr. Rowan to the practice, uh, in conjunction with adding the city of Dunedin to the program. City of Clearwater, um, looked at the utilization that they had and in terms of the number of employees that Dunedin has, they would have actually added twelve hours had they done it locally within their city limits. Um, in their situation, they had the opportunity to add these expanded hours to the Clearwater location and offer their employees obviously many, many more hours than what you're looking at. But with the city of Tarpon Springs size, you would actually only have a clinic with eight hours. So to begin with, by partnering with Oldsmar in this scenario, in the location that we were putting it, which is central to both locations, um, it will allow the twelve hours, the, and even up to three days per week, four hours per day, three days per week for the employees to access the facility. But in addition to that, um, the provider will actually make the referrals based on what is best for the patient. He, he looks to the patient for their geographic location to facilitate those referrals back to the community. And your employees that live in Tarpon Springs and in this area are already utilizing this hospital system. And we don't expect to disrupt that in any way. So I'd like, with that, I'd like to ask Dr. Rowan to speak a little bit to his.
Hello. Um, first of all, I just want to say that I moved to Florida in nineteen ninety-seven to do my family practice residency in Largo. Um, I lived in Largo until two thousand and one when I moved to Dunedin. From two thousand and one till two thousand and nine, I was in private practice, uh, in Dunedin. And, um, in fact, I still own a building down in Dunedin, if anyone's interested. Um, but I actually went to the VA, uh, due to the, the downturn in the economy, I was a solo practitioner. Um, and, um, I was actually struggling to make ends meet under the fee-for-service, uh, uh, model that most, uh, of my colleagues still operate under. And I, uh, went to work at the VA for a couple of years. But, uh, the, the way that I found that position with Care ATC was, uh, I think it was last May or so, um, uh, there was an article in the local paper that said that Dunedin was going to be partnering with Clearwater. Uh, and, uh, we're gonna be expanding the staff. So I immediately contacted Care ATC and one thing led to another and I was offered a part-time position there starting in August. And, um, you know, I was working at the VA full-time with good benefits. But, uh, even though they only offered me twenty hours per week, I, uh, liked the model that they have so well. Uh, rather than doing, again, fee-for-service, I am salaried. Um, I have no incentive to see more or less patients per day. I spend as much time as I need to with patients. Uh, I would like to address something one of the earlier speakers, uh, said, which, um, is, is actually incorrect. We do not have a network of specialists. We only do primary care. We stay within the, um, network of the insurance company, of the city for which the employee or his or her dependents, uh, are employed or, you know? Uh, so in the case of, uh, of, uh, Clearwater, we use the Cigna network. In case of, uh, Dunedin, we use Humana. Over in Tampa, I believe it's United. Over in Tampa, I believe it's United. So if I, uh, find a patient who, which is a very common thing that I discover, a fifty-year-old patient who's never had a screening colonoscopy, I get the Cigna provider list, and I make a copy of all of the participating gastroenterologists. Keep in mind that a lot of the, the employees from Clearwater and Dunedin do not live in those communities. Many of them live in Pasco, some live in Seminole, some live in Tampa. Um, I give them a copy of the list, and if they ask me for a recommendation, I will, if possible, give them a recommendation. Frankly, because I practiced in the Dunedin area as long as I did, I don't know any of the providers in, in, uh, Pasco, really. And so if, if they wanna go to somebody in Pasco, I just say, well, here's several, several, uh, board-certified gastroenterologists up that way. Uh, likewise, if they need to go to the emergency room, we send people to the ER, you know, unfortunately, um, all too often, but when we do, because our clinic is a block from Morton Plant Hospital, typically, they're gonna go to Morton Plant ER. Um, but if they, as some other people mentioned, uh, if they need care on the weekend, typically, they go to the nearest emergency room that they have. So if your employees live here in town, I'm sure they're gonna use your hospital. But I wouldn't want them, and I'm sure you wouldn't want them either, if they live in Clearwater, to drive up here to go to the emergency room, nor would they go the other way. Um, and one thing I wanna mention, uh, we, I wanna make something very clear, and Don made a very good point. Um, a lot of, uh, middle-aged people that make up the bulk of our practice, although we do see, uh, ages two and above in Clearwater, I'm not sure what, uh, you guys are interested up here, but, um, a lot of the middle-aged people, although they have health insurance, do not take advantage of it until or unless they get sick. And as you probably know, a lot of conditions that are pretty serious conditions, which can have, uh, very long-lasting repercussions, uh, you may not feel sick for a long time. Diabetes would be one example. Um, I would say probably at least fifty percent of the males between the ages of twenty and fifty that I see have not had a physical in five years or more. So to answer people like Dr. Carson, we're not, we're not in business to steal patients from your local primary care providers. Um, I, I, I like to think we're just an extra benefit, um, you know, to help capture some of the people that have hypertension, which could lead to a stroke, undiagnosed diabetes, undiagnosed hyperlipidemia, et cetera. Many, many of these employees have the benefit, but they never use it until or unless they actually feel ill. And unfortunately, sometimes that's too late. So, um, do you have any questions for me?
Uh, no, sir. I don't think anyone does, but we thank you for, uh, your explanation.
Thank you.
As we look at moving forward, I don't know if anyone has any additional questions for some of the, uh, uh, people, uh, that we've assembled here. One of the things is I wanna let my colleagues know is that, you know, uh, if I had any thought that to delay this would mean that we would have an opportunity at a better contract or something of that nature, I, I would definitely be the first one talking in terms of that. Um, I really sincerely don't see that. Uh, the only thing that I do see is that, um, the opportunity for the hospital to, uh, provide some additional services, and I say here, as I said before, is I, I expect that there's gonna be some serious negotiations. When I say serious is that they sit down and they're talking about some things, and if there, if it's comparable and it's cost-effective, then it's gonna work, then I expect for that to happen. Now, to me, if that's not gonna happen, then I think that we always have that opportunity to say, hey, this relationship is not working out, because that's what we're talking about. We're talking about building a relationship, a relationship of, of trust as we look at, at, at going forward. Uh, one of the things that was talked about is the well-being of the community, and we're talking too about the well-being of our employees and the community, because the dollars that we spend on healthcare are just dollars that we are stewards of in terms of taxpayers' money. So those type of things, I wanna go on record in saying that, hey, I sincerely don't think that thirty days is gonna do anything. I just share with you right now is that, uh, from everything I've seen from our, uh, healthcare, uh, our carrier, as far as the insurance and rest there, I'm not, uh, looking for thirty days to see if somebody else can put together a better insurance plan, you know. Uh, that's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about a clinic and how can we do some things that's gonna benefit our employees. So I just want y'all to know that, hey, I would be supportive of a delay if I thought. And I've probably had as much conversation with, uh, the hospital as, as anybody sitting up here on the, on this board besides the city manager. Already I've heard what he said in terms of a delay. So with that, I don't know whether we have any additional questions or, or at any point, or trying to make an decision.
I have a few comments here.
Yes, sir.
I wanna first and foremost thank everybody for coming tonight. It's certainly, uh, you know, been a long two-hour discussion. Um, let me first begin by commending the city manager for his efforts in, um, trying to provide better healthcare to the city employees, you know, with the idea of cost-saving through a preventative care approach. Um, for me, the discussion tonight is not whether CareATC can provide a better plan at Florida Hospital, um, but rather granting the hospital an opportunity without being rushed or confined to a few days, um, to try and find a compromise with CareATC. Um, a compromise where everyone can walk away feeling satisfied, um, involved, and in an essence, as one of the speakers before said, um, with the potential to try and craft a better deal for the employees and for this community as a whole. Um, many times I've heard a fair deal is when everyone walks away from the table thinking they got a fair deal. Um, so I think it's important for everyone to, to remember and acknowledge that the hospital and facilities are owned, as said, by the city of Tarpon Springs. Um, Florida Hospitals, as said, have made contributions of over forty million dollars, um, all of which the improvements will stay with the city. Um, the, annually, the city gets a lease payment of three hundred thousand dollars from the hospital among numerous benefits that are pro bono. Um, it should go without saying that the hospital is one of our biggest assets to the community when looking to attract new business, industry, and residents alike. Um, the hospital is without a doubt our biggest employer. Um, with that also comes people living and working within the community, spending money on groceries, paying taxes, uh, going out to eat, buying gifts, et cetera. Um, and for these reasons, I find it, you know, just totally unreasonable for this commission not to give thirty days for CareATC and Florida Hospital to find a common ground, uh, work a deal, and potentially come up with a more tailored fit for the community. Um, at the end of the thirty days, if a compromi- compromise cannot be made between CareATC and the hospital, then at least this commu- uh, this commission and the community will have stood proud behind our city-owned facility and our city-owned hospital by at least giving them the opportunity. Um, and that said, I'd move to postpone the approval of this contract for thirty days and give Florida Hospital and CareATC an opportunity to try and find a, a compromise.
You know, the comments, somebody has, like, will wear, uh, Commissioner Locke's.
Thank you.
And there's no second, so.
Thank you again. Um, I'll ask in advance for everyone to forgive me if I kind of dabble around, so I've got a whole bunch of notes that I took from the various speakers, and so I may, I may not go in the order that I intended to. Um, the first thing I wanna do is, uh, express my appreciation for everybody that came and spoke this evening. Uh, really, uh, an amazing group of people that are leaders in our community, uh, and I wanna express my appreciation for, uh, for the hospital and for the various things that the hospital has done since, uh, since the Adventist group has gotten involved, forty million dollars that they put into the hospital, twenty-two million dollars for indigent care. Um, it really, we really do have an awesome hospital in Tarpon Springs, and I believe we have a very positive relationship with that hospital, and that's very important. Um, what we're talking about tonight is, is a little bit different, though, and I, I, I wrote down some quotes from some of the things that some of the speakers said. Um, Mr. Puskuuta said, "Everybody wants what's best for the city," and I couldn't agree more. I, I think everybody in the audience, everybody that came to the podium, everybody sitting up here, we all do want what's best for the city. Uh, one of the things that I'm aware of is how much money the city is spending every year on health insurance. We're, we're currently spending two point six million dollars a year on health insurance. Uh, the current projections say that that's gonna go up by maybe eight, ten, maybe even twelve percent a year. We're in a situation each year that we're having a hard time balancing our budget, and we're looking at, you know, do we need to raise the mileage? Can we lower the mileage rate? Can we keep the mileage rate the same? Can we continue to offer the great health insurance that we do offer to our employees? These are the types of questions that we've gotta be answering as a board of commissioners. So when we're looking at this agenda item, it, it isn't just a matter of can we provide, I, I know Mr. Bertram, uh, mentioned that our priority is to increase wellness, which I agree with, and our priority is to increase access to care, which I agree with, but I think there's a third priority which wasn't mentioned, and that's to lower the city's health insurance cost as well. And that's accomplished, as Mr. Licorice said, that's accomplished by lowering the number of claims, and I think that's very important, uh, to make note of. Um, something else I wanted to address. I, the, the bottom line is when we're looking at the two point six million dollar figure, we, we can't sustain that increasing at eight to ten to twelve percent. And, and when you look at what the city of Clearwater and Dunedin have already done in terms of Clearwater saving a million dollars a year, and I know we're not, we don't have the, the number of employees involved to reach that figure, but, but to see them saving that kind of money and to hear from Vice Mayor Slattery that she spoke with Dunedin employees and say this is the greatest thing, you know, that, that the city's done, that's the type of thing that I, I think is very useful for us to get involved with. Uh, as we move forward, I think obviously we wanna continue to have an extremely positive relationship with the hospital, but I don't think we want to, what, turn away, turn our back on the opportunities being presented to us. I know that, um, the hospital has already had meetings with the mayor and the city manager, uh, and they've already, you know, given a presentation. Um, the principal thing missing from that presentation was the, uh, concept of not having additional claims, and I think that's important. The other thing I wanted to mention, Commissioner Terapany talked about giving the hospital an opportunity to come up with something where they're not rushed. And one thing I wanted to point out, in July of two thousand and ten, that's when, uh, Clearwater, uh, started their clinic, that was very well, uh, publicized, it was in Tampa Bay Times. I mean, there, there was news about that, so people in the health field were aware that this was happening. Uh, in July two thousand and twelve, Dunedin joined. Once again, people that are in the know in healthcare were aware that this is, this is what's happening. Um, various municipalities, uh, some school boards, various agencies are doing this. If Florida Hospital wanted to get involved, they could've said at that point in time, hey, there's, there's kind of a trend here, there's something that's happening here, maybe we could get involved with that. Um, so I, I don't think that there's a thirty-day, that anything different could happen in thirty days that, that the opportunity wasn't already there to happen in the past. Uh, so I'm not in support of waiting thirty days. I, I think that that could endanger what, uh, we already have in terms of our relationship with our current insurance carrier. You know, we talked about relationships and trust, as the mayor mentioned. I, I, I don't think that that's gonna be a positive thing. I'm, I'm in support of what we have in front of us right now. Thank you.
Let me share a bathroom.
Yes, I, I, I have, I, I have a question for, for our, for our, for, for our, our attorney. If we prove this tonight, um, and say the hospital still wanted to offer, uh, uh, that they've outlined, would it be a violation of our contract in the win, uh, the win promoting that to our, to our employees as far as, I know there wasn't a contract, a whole section on us marketing the wellness center to, to our employees and encouraging use, obviously to get the claims ratio down. So if, 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 if this passed tonight, and if Florida Hospital still wanted to offer these bullet points, would that be, and then we, if we would promote that as well alongside, assuming that's still what they wanted to do, would that be in, though, in violation of, 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 of our contract with Care and with the league?
First of all, you gotta know that there is another party involved here, and that's the city of Oldsmar. This contract will not become effective until all the parties have signed. The city of Oldsmar will not consider it until at least June eighteenth. So if there is something that's gonna happen over the next fourteen days or so, that will probably happen before the Oldsmar meeting, but it won't become effective until that time. But once it's signed by all of the parties, that doesn't mean that CareATC still can't contract with the hospital to do anything, because it's really not part of this agreement. This is a three-party agreement, Oldsmar, Tarpon Springs, and the trust, and so whatever they do is their own business, basically. So it will not be a violation or a breach of this particular agreement if it was approved.
So, so the city could promote both alongside each other, if Florida Hospital still wanted to offer all, all, uh, these benefits with no co-pays to our, to our employees. We, we, we could still promote that along with the wellness center. That's what I'm asking you. There wouldn't be any, any issue with the contract with that?
I don't think that you would, you would wanna promote that. The idea here is just to, to prevent the claims. And obviously, if they're gonna go to the hospital, that, you know, there is gonna be some claims gonna be made. Otherwise, there would, there would be no benefit to the hospital to do it.
But there are other things, and I think it's more, I think the other things are more with us and HR, for instance, you know, promoting, we've got a sleep center in town.
Well, that's why I asked in my conversations with you, is that they could promote this alongside.
Absolutely. You know, provide information to our employees on, on availability, especially again, you know. Obviously, I've been involved with sleep, that's why I know the.
I just personally feel, and then again, the, the hospital, if this happens, might, might not, might not want to, uh, to, to offer that, but if they do, I, 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 I just wanted to make sure we, as, 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 as the, 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 the city could promote both, um, you know, and, um, 'cause if we don't and we just promote the one, then I, so I think some of the feelings here tonight might bring a, 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 a little true. Well, one, one thing to point out, and I, I did run these numbers by Mark today, um, if you take, uh, the first payment, and I, I think we have to all recall here that we are engaging in, in, in a financial, financial, financial deal. This is not just, you know, the league, which I'm very thankful for. You do so much for this city, especially Tarpon Springs and Tallahassee, and we, we often get, you know, washed out, um, because of, because of our size. Um, when we, um, take in the first payment, uh, one eighty-six, uh, three thirty-seven, that would be due, I guess, rolled into our, our, our premiums, correct, in October twenty fourteen? Is that correct? And then by then, we'd have almost two years of rent payments in, about a year and a half, maybe two years, okay? You, okay, so you take that, you're, you're then in the, in the, though, in the ballpark of, of us having spent somewhere between two fifteen to two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, okay, and then you take our, our, our potential savings, which I believe is around three hundred thousand, correct, right, um, which we, we would hopefully realize around the October, uh, fourteen renewal, correct, okay? That equals sixty-four thousand, uh, nine seventeen. Now, I ran on a very conservative platform as far as specifically speaking goes, but I mean, that's, that's not a huge number to get you to rush into a contract. We, we, we wouldn't purchase land in, in, in this kind of a process here. And that's why whenever I'm, I'm, I'm rushed into, into doing something, red flags go up for me. But if, 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 if we don't have a, 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 a local hospital wanting to offer these, these type of benefits, there would probably be no question that this is the best route to go. But I am in favor of giving the hospital thirty more days, just in good faith, to see what, what can be done, uh, alongside CareATC, Care, uh, you know, um, Care, uh, CareATC. Because I think that's the least we can do, um, uh, for, for, uh, for, you know, somebody who, who has invested in, in, in our community. And I, I know it's been laughed at, kind of, but I, 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 I do take issue with sending people to, uh, you know, out, out, out of Tarpon Springs for healthcare. Uh, they can obviously choose to use it or not. They can choose to go to their, their doctor. My, my doctor, uh, you know, um, uh, sitting, uh, in this room, and I've never, since seeing that, that practice once, that, 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 since, since I was probably five years old, never not gotten in the same day. That's just not true in this case. But, um, so I would be in favor of waiting thirty days. If not, if, if an agreement cannot, cannot be, be reached, I am permitting forward with this, but, uh, I do think that we need to keep in mind, um, the hospital here and also the financial side of this that I haven't heard much about tonight. Thank you.
And, and let me, let me help you some, uh, uh, commission, simply because I was involved.
Mm-hmm.
And this proposal that you see here, I, I sent it away. And one of the things that was the key thing in here was no claims submitted. With this, they wanted to submit claims. The whole premise of what we're trying to do is no claims submitted. So just by the sake of that, they can't even do this. I mean, I, I'm standing this here publicly like this because this is the conversation that we had. No claims submitted is the deal breaker for this, what you're talking about, taking thirty days to do, okay? The other part of what you're talking about is when we talked about trying to do this, the facility that we was. the facility that we was gonna use was right opposite of the one that we're talking about using in Palm Harbor. So to think that we're talking about a local facility is not what we talked about. We talked about a facility still in Palm Harbor. We talked about trying to have it somewhere central so Oldsmar could do that and the rest of that. So the only difference that we're talking about, that it would have been connected to Tarpon Hospital or North Pinellas, but we still would've been talking about people leaving here and going to Palm Harbor to the doctor. And the other part is no claims submitted. Which is why I share with you, I share with the rest of my colleagues, is that I don't believe that thirty days does us any good because we're still at the same point of what the city manager's talked about. It's the no claims part that causes them not to be able to do this. Not just no co-pay, it's the no claims. It's that and the truth of the matter is, we talked about Palm Harbor. And I told you, you know, when I say something privately, I say it, say it publicly. So I'm not making this up. This is what we talked about. And this is what was submitted to them, and the- the deal breaker is the claim part. So I understand what you're talking about, but thirty days won't do us any good because we'll still be at the same point. And we're still talking about out-of-town facilities and not talk- talking about Tarpon. So with that, Commissioner Slattery?
Thank you. Um, I do wanna see both parties interest in some sort of a- in some sort of a joint venture. And I'm not sure, you know, if we could add something to the contract that, um, you know, we go ahead and- and approve the contract tonight with the caveat signal that the, um, Florida Hospital has first rights to, well, wouldn't be a bid on any- on any, um, on any care or practices other than what CARE ATC- ATC provides. I'm- I'm- but again, my question, but I'm confused is because we have another party. We have, um, City of Oldsmar that's involved. So if they are reviewing or discussing the contract at the end of this month?
June eighteenth.
June eighteenth. So they would also have to agree that if we put some sort of other language in the contract.
That's right.
And if they don't agree, then- then what?
Then you're gonna be paying for all of it, a hundred percent, probably.
Or they come back to us and say, no, um, we want, you know, we're- we're in negotiations with them, is- is that what I'm- that's kinda what I'm getting. Would we be in negotiations then with the City of Oldsmar? But we want this and we want, you know, back and forth type thing.
That would be something that the city managers would definitely want to discuss. Um, and I'm not saying that it shouldn't be discussed, but it really wasn't part of the platform, part of the deal, uh, from the very beginning. So I'm not sure with the city manager in Oldsmar, what that council would do.
One- one thing I- I would just say on your, uh, Vice Mayor is that I'm at the same point with you. I wanna do business with the hospital. And I'm saying to CARE ATC is I expect that you're going to attempt and try to do business with the hospital. Now, it's their responsibility to come with something that's cost-effective and comparable. That's all they have to do. If they do that, then I'm gonna be one that's sitting here, at least for a little while, unless the Lord says differently, you know, that, hey, we don't need to have a contract with someone that we can't trust. I- I, you know, some of the stuff is- is, to me, it's just that simple that if they bring some things to the table that's cost-effective and the rest of that, and I'm sure if they can call me, email the board members, the rest, if they have something viable on the table that CARE ATC looks at and throws aside, that they're gonna definitely let us know that they don't think they're being treated fairly. So I think that we still have options as it relates to making sure, and I think that they wanna work with North. I believe the League wanna work with North, uh, with those. I mean, now that they've come forward, shown what they have, I believe they want to. It's just for us to say to them, this is what we expect, I mean.
Well, I- I just wanna put this out there about- about our hospital. I know they've come a long way. I have to say, Mr. Burgham, thank you. Um, uh, and I know it really is confusing with the hospital care and everything, but I was in the hospital at the emergency room recently, and one of your staff said that your ratings have gone up. And hopefully you can come to, your rating, the rating of the hospital has gone up? Yes, I know what they call it, the star or something like that. And, uh, so hopefully you can come and speak at some time in front of the commission and- and let everybody know that. Let the community know that. Um, but back to what we were talking about. Um, if we approve this contract this evening, would they have a separate contract, ATC, with the, um, with the hospital? With that, so that would be a totally separate contract?
That's right. That's right.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
I have one quick clar- clarification, Mayor. I- I wanna make clear, I do want a- a- a wellness center for our- for- for, you know, our- our staff. That is what I- but to me, it's about what is the best option for Tarpon Springs? And I realize as we've seen countless examples of other cities, the land, Dunedin, Clearwater, Tampa, where these clinics have worked, it doesn't always necessarily mean it's- it's gonna work for Tarpon Springs. And that's all I'm saying. And I just thought sometimes the numbers kinda got lost in this conversation. And it's not as if this is a free venture and we're saving money on claims. It'd be a no-brainer then. We're having to spend money to save money. And that's not really been talked about, and that's why I just brought up that sixty-five thousand dollar number. Now, that's a- that's a pretty big savings. And we could realize more than that. I fully realize that, as Mr. Lawson said, he's not seen one city lose money on- on this venture yet. But, um, but that's- my clarification is that this is not a free offer from CARE ATC or the League. We have to pay for this to save money. And, um, that's kinda got lost in the conversation from- from my viewpoint, that's all.
And- and you're right. I mean, the- the thing that too is that, I don't know, Commissioner, uh, Tarpani wants to say something to that. This is a pilot. You know, there are some risks involved. If we can get to sixty-some thousand, we'd be on the positive side going into first year. To me, I think that we'd be doing great, continually moving forward. And I think I'm as conservative as you, if not more conservative. But, you know, sometimes you're doing some things, and yes, you're taking some inherent risks. But we're taking some calculated risks that this is gonna work for our employees. So, um, Commissioner Tarpani?
Thank you.
I would just, for the record, like to clarify my position. I fully understand what CARE ATC is offering in certain aspects that the hospital can't. My- my position is that, as the city attorney has said, the city of Oldsmar isn't even going to hear this until June eighteenth. That's approximately, give or take a day, two weeks from today. So my position is not to say, no, we don't want CARE ACT or ATC, we want Florida Hospital, North Pinellas. I'm not saying that. Alls I'm saying is, I would like some form of a guarantee that Florida Hospital, North Pinellas, is included within this agreement. Carry, that's all I have.
And- and what I would say to you, uh, Commissioner, is to do what? Uh, seriously? Ask them. They're out there. I mean, they're out there. If I'm saying something that's untrue, then all they have to do is say, hey, wait a minute, wait a minute. I will come and I will speak to that. We talked about doing this, and they were gonna submit claims. And we're saying that to make this work, you can't submit claims. So this right here is, in a sense, not what we are talking about in terms of moving forward. So it's what type of agreement would you like to have them to enter into? It's not to provide a, uh, clinic. It might be to provide some of the other services to the clinic, you know? Yes, sir.
Mayor, 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 I- I just wanna, uh, be clear. I mean, there is a cost of running this clinic. Whether you pay for it in a flat fee and a yearly amount, there still is a cost that the city ATC is gonna expect to get reimbursed, the trust is expected to get reimbursed. So the fact that they're not submitting claims, yes, that is a true thing. But it is being offset by the fact that you are paying a fixed fee or an annual fee or some type of a fee for it. There's nothing free in healthcare. Let- let- I- I do wanna just clarify that. The other point I wanna clarify for- for a comment you made and also that Mark put in a- a message to me, we are a tax exempt nonprofit hospital. This money doesn't come from shareholders, the investment that we've made in the community. This comes from sister hospitals within Adventist Health System. So it's critical, and you know that there's not shareholders that are looking for a return here. That doesn't exist in our organization. So the money is local.
Well, when we talk about local from the standpoint of what, you know, is mentioned for as small business.
Right.
And that money staying within the community.
Right.
Is the thought that I was conveying. Not that you're not nonprofit, not that you don't do a good job for the community's concern and- and- and participating. This is why I say, and I continue to say, we have the best hospital. And this is not about the hospital. As Commissioner, uh, Bouncer should eloquently put, if the hospital wasn't even involved, this would be something that we would just not even be talking about. But because you're involved and because everybody sits up here, respects what has happened since the Adventists have come in, the dollars that they infused in it, the- the hospital is a part of the community. Nobody wants to do anything that's gonna hurt the hospital. Everybody wants to do something to help the hospital. So now we got the hospital involved in this. And I'm just saying that what we have in front of us as far as the hospital providing the clinic is not where we're at. And I don't know what to do, you know, I don't know where we're at in terms of.
I- I think I can make it simple, like Mr. Slattery and everything else. They're not gonna agree to that. You can't put a caveat that you have to deal with somebody. Again, the onus is on them. You- you can't do that. You- you- you can't guarantee that. Um, because that might not be the, you know, they have to prove themselves that they're the best option. And like I say, you know.
They give them first choice.
You know, the- you know, the word of- of, and if they promised you the do- they promised to give them, you know, the first option. But if there's another option out there that saves us money, you know, it's just like with local business. You know, plumbing contracts here, and we save a bunch of money when we go bid and do it there. You know, they're gonna be looking at the best deal for us. And they're not gonna be able to guarantee us that, you know, you- it's gonna, might as well vote no on the clinic tonight because that's not gonna be in the contract coming up. So I- I don't want it, that fourteen days, thirty days, you know, they're not gonna be able to guarantee it. They have promised us, and again, they work for us, Clay works for us. They have all promised that they'll work every way with the hospital. They have committed to us, and I've committed to you, every way with the hospital. Not only from their aspect, but the city, from HR's aspect, to promote the hospital and their programs and stuff. We've committed to that. And that's the most we can do on this thing. If it's a case of doing that, you might as well vote no tonight because that's not gonna happen now or in fourteen days or in thirty days. Then just vote no on the clinic because it's- it's not gonna happen. We need, you know, um, but we've all made those insurances and promised to you. They know from me telling them, they know from the mayor telling them, both hospital and CARE ATC and the Florida League of Cities. That's all we can commit to here tonight. Um, and it's not gonna work with the contract. It's gonna be a situation where you need to vote no tonight, and we just, and the idea is that's it. I mean, here, that's the bottom line of it.
I trust all of you. And if you promise something, I believe that you're gonna do it. And for me, I tell them, and I say it publicly, I promise that if CARE ATC does not actively look at trying to have a relationship with North Pinellas, I'll be wanting to talk about revoking it. And I'm saying that North Pinellas needs to step up to the table and they can put something comparable and cost-effectives down, then, hey, we look to work. They don't? It's about business. Because ultimately, what we're talking about is about the employees. And the higher the costs are, the more they're gonna affect the employees. I mean, that's what we're getting away from. It's about the employees' healthcare coverage. You know, it's also about trying to help the hospital for as, they have quality services. So this is not about quality. This is about cost. Come in, be cost-effective. You know, I- it's something about when attorneys come.
I appreciate you, Mayor. Um, you know, I- one of the things that I think is missing here from this discussion is, you know, is there an opportunity to make it better? Are you saying that- that there's nothing that you have in your program that can't be better? Have you thought of sitting down with the representatives of the hospital and saying, you know what? Let's see if we can't make this better? Maybe as a model to take further on to other communities. How many communities, other than maybe Dunedin, okay? They have their- they have their- their medical practice or your clinics, but they're located within the city limits. They don't have to send their employees out of town, uh, for healthcare. I don't know that.
Mike, don't even go with the Clearwater.
I just said other.
So- so I- I appreciate that, but you already know the point, Mike. We've discussed it, and I- now you're getting up here saying that you know the point. Where does Florida Hospital send our people for the pre-employment pencils? You send us to Trinity.
But you know what? Those- those that own practice, those- those dollars come back to this hospital. Just like the practices that I suggested in- in Palm Harbor, Mr. Mayor, because it was more convenient for those people in Oldsmar. We said, yeah, we have employed physicians in Palm Harbor. But the bottom line is those profits come back to the city.
What- what I wanna do, and I'm- I'm trying to close the public comment I thought that as a courtesy.
I- I- I appreciate that, as I talk.
You know, because it.
One more, and then I'll- I'll sit down. You know, if I just, and- and I wanna thank, uh, Dr. Carson for reminding me this. You mentioned that your- your current spend is two point six million dollars in healthcare costs? If- if your desire is to cut that rate of growth and or reduce it, you know, allow, you know, give me time to put together a proposal with our insurance company, see if we can accomplish that right out of the bat. Again, so, again, just, you- you ask, you- you're talking about sixty-five thousand versus two point six million dollars.
My- my- I- I don't need to tell you that I respect you. I'm not leaving, this is why, this whole thing is getting muddied up because of the hospital. Now we're talking about they can provide a better insurance plan. You know, I mean, we- we- we started off trying to see if we can do a clinic that will benefit our employees, and now we're talking about an insurance plan. And- and this is what I'm saying, it keeps moving, and what Commissioner Lawson said was, is true, is that everybody, including North, uh, uh, Pinellas, Florida Hospital, North Pinellas, knew that there's a move to go to clinics. It's not just happening here, it's happening all over the state of Florida, all over the country. Everybody's doing it. So they have plenty of opportunities to do all of this stuff. And there's plenty of opportunities, I can tell you right now, we- we have a contract for insurance. We're not talking about going out for insurance, no. If you want to, and you want to, get with your people, do something, the rest of that, and feel like at some point in time you wanna submit that, but that's not what we're talking about right now. We're talking about a clinic.
I- I understand that, and respectfully, I was just responding to the fact that you're looking to save healthcare dollars spent with the- the formation of this clinic. So, again, it is a bigger sense.
Proposal.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I could, in- in a moment, I'd like to make a motion, um, to- to approve what's being presented to us this evening. Before I make the motion, I wanna explain, uh, my reasoning behind it. I- I think waiting thirty days is going to be harmful to our relationship, not just with the League of Cities, our insurance provider, but I think waiting thirty days could actually be harmful to our relationship with the hospital. After thirty days, when the hos- or during those thirty days, when the hospital provides some additional presentation that still won't include the component of- of not filing claims, we're- we're probably gonna be right where we are this evening. We're gonna have another meeting, we're gonna have different people, uh, that- that we, you know, respect and are friends with and wanna have a positive relationship with, are gonna come to the podium and be very upset. And I- I don't think we're reaching anything positive by extending this thing out another thirty days. I- I think that the right thing to do is to move forward at this time. And, uh, so I, this time, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the, uh, wellness clinics that's being presented this evening.
Mayor, may I- may I say something?
Yes.
I know there's a motion on the floor, may I speak to that motion? I can do a second. I need a second at first. I can second at first, okay, second. Um, I- I just wanna say, and I think everybody is missing the point. Um, it is about the employees. Um, it's not about the hospital, their service. Um, it's not about the hospital, their service. We all know that they're excellent, it's an excellent hospital, and it's come a long way, and I'm very proud of it. Um, and I'm kind of concerned because we can't get something writing into our contract that, um, that CARE ATC, um, isn't, you know, just saying that, you know, we agreed to give first option to Florida Hospital and everything, but are in good faith. I mean, I know, I know the mayor, you know, and I understand where the mayor's coming from, and we trust people, and... I mean, can I ask you that, I mean, I want to make sure that our hospital is utilized for the services that you can't provide.
What we could put in writing, no problem, because it's our desire. It makes life easier for us to deal with the hospital that has all the services. Instead of piecemeal, going to several different options. I mean, there's lots of reasons why, and we tried to make that clear on our call last night and tonight and saying at one final time, we'll put in writing that we're going to them first and see what they have to offer. To be fair to you and to be fair to the League of Cities that's initially putting up the money and that you're going to be responsible for over the time, we just need to make sure that those are good options.
Right.
And we will compare, but we will give every opportunity for the hospital to be involved in these services, such as, I would think, the sleep disorder service. I mean, there's plenty of too many of those around, it would make perfect sense. There'll be plenty of opportunities for those. We'll put in writing, we'll go to them first. But I don't think you want us to put in writing, and probably, maybe the hospital wouldn't even want that either, to say, "We're only going to deal with them because it does take away some of our leverage." And I don't think that would be best for everybody involved, including our model and us keeping true to what we have been doing in other areas.
I thank you for that. And that's kind of where I would like, I don't know if Commissioner Lawson wants to amend his motion, that, his verbiage, that they, you know, offer the services to our Florida Hospital first, but it's not guaranteed that they will get the business.
It isn't clear to me what the amendment to the motion would be.
I think that he talked about that he would put in the contract that they would go to, offer, um...
Negotiate in good faith with the hospital.
Negotiate with the hospital in good faith.
In writing or just tell you verbally, "I'll assure you it'll happen."
Add that to the contract.
I think what the point is that they can put that in writing, but it's not going to be in writing as part of the contract.
You know the point why it can't be in the contract? We started this process this evening with a statement that this service that CARE ATC provides in addition to the services within the health plan are one hundred percent voluntary on the part of the patient participating by their free will. By placing in the contract that we will allow those services only with Florida Hospital, we're removing that freedom of choice. We're telling the patients that they have to go to Florida Hospital. We're making a commitment to make referrals and to make available to the patients the services that are here local in the community. That will not change whether it's in writing or not. We always want to serve the local community. We will even use the local community for any of the services that are geographically and reasonably available to those patients based on their home and whatever access they may need special services for. But that's not what I was, what I'm asking is not to say that you have to use Florida Hospital, that you will agree to, um, negotiate with them first. CARE ATC is willing to compose a letter even before leaving this auditorium tonight to the Florida Hospital, making that commitment. It just can't be part of the contract.
And I think that ultimately, if it's part of the contract or not, if it doesn't happen, you can always be one, and I'll be supporting you in terms of saying, "We don't want to continue the agreement."
I'm sorry, can I...
We don't want to continue the agreement.
Can we do that, though? I mean, we're not...
There's a termination clause and the rest of that in there. Now, it's going to cost some dollars to do it. You know, I mean, hey, that's life. I mean, if it doesn't work for us, we're going to do that anyway. And I'm doing this as a quote-unquote compromise because my thoughts are, we said to them what we want them to do. They said that we agreed to it. And as you said, if it wasn't the hospital, it was any other entity, we wouldn't even have this conversation. Simply wouldn't even, it wouldn't even be a conversation that we would be having about trying to make sure that one entity gets business. My thoughts is this, their quality, they should be able to come in with a comparable, cost-effective rate, and then they should be able to fit everybody. Yes, sir. I know we got a motion...
Yeah, I was just going to address the idea of an amendment to the motion. I understand the reason why it really can't be a part of the contract. So, I'm not, I'm not willing to add that as an amendment to the motion. I do think it's a positive thing that there's been an offer to provide a letter to Florida Hospital. Maybe a copy of that could be provided to the city as well, just for our record. But I can understand why that doesn't belong in the actual agreement.
I just want to say a couple more things before we vote, and then I'm more than willing and ready to vote. I want the best healthcare possible for our employees, just as much as anybody else on this board. And y'all know me, and you know that I look for cost savings every day. But I said earlier that a fair deal is when everybody walks away from the table thinking they got a fair deal, and it's my opinion that Florida Hospital is not getting a fair deal. I'm ready to vote.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, you ask the question, because I'm trying not to comment on that, you know? Go ahead.
So, if we decide to make a motion or approve a motion go through that we want to wait thirty days, explain to me again what...
Nothing's going to happen.
Okay, we're, well, okay, are we under pressure of signing the contract with the bills out on the property? On the plea agreement?
We could be, again, going back to that, going back to thirty days, and that is not going to come, you know, get the building in jeopardy, you got the, the, um, the coveries that we got to start saving on to go through. Um, you know, you've got a lot of hurdles that this thing could go apart with.
Or is CARE ATC, are they not willing to give us thirty days?
I'm just not sure it works. And of course, they're here to tell you that they're, and I think the point is there is going to be nothing in the thirty days.
And again, we have a third party that would be involved.
And we got a third party. But, you know, Clay works for, Clay Austin works for us. I mean, again, he's heard you, and the best of the possibilities, they've assured you, they're going to write the letter. Um, Clay works for us, who's going to be in charge of them. He's heard what you've had to say. And again, the only way it won't happen, I can tell you, is if they don't get a reasonable offer. And you're not going to want them to take an offer that's not reasonable. And that still doesn't stop, even if the offer's not reasonable, it still doesn't stop the commitment for HR to work with the hospital on different things. There are still ways, we got to accomplish some of those things on a list that don't involve copays, and we can work with them, get their word out, encourage our employees to stay local doctors. We can still do all that, whether they reach an agreement or not. We can still do all that with our employees to do. And I've committed to you and everybody here that we will do that. Um, but, you know, we really need to approve this contract tonight.
And I will, one thing I think to you is, and I know it's a difficult decision. Don't think that it's easy for any of us. But one of the things that Commissioner Carpani said that I believe is definitely relevant is that this, what we're doing, is more than fair to North Pennellas, way above anything. To say we go to them first, give them the first choice, they got quality, all they have to do is come in with a comparable, uh, price? How is that not fair to them? You know, I mean, to say, "Hey, show me what you got, you know what we need..." Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to point out, I might have a disagreement with you slightly, and just want to make it clear that, you know, in the sense of, and I, even though, obviously, I'm not going to vote in favor of this motion, but what I don't, what I would never put on a business, especially when there's another party involved in Oldsmobile, for them to use Florida Hospital first, I know they can't do that, and they're, well, I guess they theoretically can, but they would not do that in this contract. And second, to say that if we discover a year down the road that they're not using it to our comfort level, then we're going to get out of the contract, that's not a place that I want this city to be or I want this board to be. So, you know, when I read that termination clause, whenever I read a contract, whether it's a cell phone carrier or a large wellness clinic like this, I read the termination clause. And yes, there are ways out of this, but they're not cheap ways out. And I just don't think that's the place that I want to put this city in. That, well, a year down the road, you're sending too many people down too many countries. So, I would see the, well, it wasn't their right to do. But, so, we're going to rescind this contract. To me, then that just would not look good for the city. I want a wellness center for Tarpon Springs, for our employees. But I don't think, basically speaking, and again, I've not heard a whole lot about the investment we're doing in this. I'm not sold this is the right one. I could be wrong, but that's my opinion.
Okay, just a clarification. Commissioner Lawson, your motion was to approve the wellness clinic that's presented. Correct?
Correct.
Commissioner Banther?
No.
Commissioner Tiafani?
No.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. And, you know, as we look at closing, I say I appreciate everyone that came, talked about it. Um, I do think that's going to be a win-win situation. I do look for the North Pennellas to benefit from this, but more importantly, I believe that our employees will benefit, so... With that, we'll adjourn this meeting at nine twelve.